And all the people agreed to the covenant. The king then ordered Hill Thaya, the high priest.
Just before we start, just a couple of housekeeping things. I'd like to welcome and introduce our newest board member, Susan Reeve.
Hey, everybody.
This is Susan's first meeting. She was appointed by the town board in December. She's the vice president of New York Life. So we're glad to have you.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here.
Good. There is one change to the agenda. Item number six, Scott View Skylights. They informed us this afternoon that they were withdrawing their application for it tonight. They do intend to appear before the ZBA the end of the month and come back to this board in February. They have modified their site plan quite a bit. They've shrunk in the building. So we will be addressing that in future meetings. Since we are on Zoom tonight and everybody has a nearby microphone, I would ask that only one person speak at a time because if you're on Zoom, if two people are speaking or rustling papers, there's a lot of interference and you really can't understand anybody. So everybody's going to get a chance to speak, but one at a time, please, as we go along. So with that, I think the first item is a motion to open public hearing.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So any Watchtower representative want to begin a presentation?
Should I use this microphone?
Yes, please. I believe it's on. It's green, so.
So thank you, Mr. Van Ull and the board. We appreciate your time this evening. We had a very good meeting with yourselves last month and got some very good constructive feedback from you, as well as the reviews by Ms. Naughton, Valdmanestra, and Mr. Hoffman. Since that time, we've had a chance to review their very salient comments and we've adjusted our documentation. We turned it to them and we've gotten some follow-up comments that are quite succinct and easy to address, so we don't see any issues with that. One of the things that concerns us in our project is since we spoke the last time, the Ramapo Town Board has approved of the special permit that we were seeking with them, which basically authorized tree clearing within the area of disturbance of the site plan of the project. So we're very keen, of course, to try to get on with that site, with that tree removal, while the window of opportunity for tree removal is permitted by the DEC, which closes at the end of March. When we initially, of course, made the application with the town of Tuxedo, we did not have approval, a seeker approval for the project. So there was no way that even with our non-segmented work of the new road alignment on Sterlington Drive, which leads up to the St. Joseph's Care Home and aligns now with Eagle Valley Road across the street, the planning board naturally had to put a restriction on us that we could not use that drive for tree clearing activities because they were not permitted and the seeker process was not complete. So now, as of October or November 8th, the seeker process is complete. Now we've had the town board, the planning board of Ramapo, issue the approval to allow us to remove trees. So we come before you tonight for a couple of things. Mainly, we're here to progress our site plan application for the seven acres of the project that are in the town of Tuxedo and present that, see through the comments, whatever comments we have from our neighbors and the public. Also, we are pleading, I guess, with the planning board for your assistance and whatever we can do to be able to get started with that tree clearing activity in a way that is acceptable to Tuxedo. We know very much the concerns that were raised last week about the traffic that would be generated, particularly on Sterling Mine Road, which many of us track every day as well, so understand the problems associated with it. We're also aware of the fact that though we could wait till a future date when we have a temporary access farther into the town of Ramapo and Rockland County, we do have a situation now where we have a realigned road with a proper left-hand turn lane off of Sterling Mine Road. We suggest that it actually empowers Tuxedo more than takes it away if there could be some consideration given to permitting us to use that entrance temporarily as a means of getting our work started on the site until such time as a finding statement of our site plan approval can be sorted out by the planning board. We appreciate that anything that happens on Sterling Mine Road affects everyone on Sterling Mine Road, people from New Jersey, or people from Tuxedo, people from Warwick and other localities. So we appreciate your time tonight. You've prepared a brief presentation with our planning consultant, Ashley Lai, and our legal consultant, Mr. Ira Manuel. So hopefully, we can answer any questions that you have in the public house about the application we're looking for.
Okay. Thank you.
So as Keith mentioned, this is the project site. Oh, sorry. I've got to plug this in now. Hopefully, everybody stays connected.
Maybe just go back to make sure they're still there. If you can just go back to the previous screen.
There's 14 people on the bottom right.
I see that. All right.
Oh, so this is the recording. So we're good. All right. So this is the project site. It's approximately two miles from Watchtower's world headquarters in Warwick, New York. It's approximately 249 acres. However, the bulk of that is in the town of Ramapo. Only seven acres are in the town of Tuxedo. The development in Tuxedo would be limited to secondary access off of Sterling Mine Road. As you can see on this slide, the main entrance would be from Sterling Mine Road in the town of Ramapo. The resident entrance would be off the newly realigned Sterlington Road, and that would be gate-controlled. This slide shows the area that's within the town of Tuxedo, the area shown in gray. And as was discussed, there were some realignments to Sterlington Road that cross from Eagle Valley Road in the town of Tuxedo. The area shown in green is the area that was already installed, and you can see the landscaping was installed as well. And it connects to an existing gravel driveway that enters the project site. These are the improvements that would be within the town of Tuxedo. It would be limited to the resident entrance and driveway. At the last meeting, there was a discussion about how vehicles would turn around as they got to the gate. That turnaround was moved a little bit closer to the gate, as you can see on this slide. And then also, another change is all of the footpaths that cross wetlands were removed from the wetland area. For now, the footpaths would completely avoid the wetlands. The only area where there's a wetland crossing would be over the existing bridge, the stone bridge that's in the town of Ramapo. The other item that would be in the town of Tuxedo are some incoming utilities that are also shown on the plan. There is extensive landscaping proposed throughout the project site. The area shown in light gray is the area of landscaping that was already installed as part of the road realignment project. The areas shown in dark gray is the landscaping that's proposed as part of this project. As you can see, it extends all the way into the site and continues as it enters into Ramapo. Then along Sterling Mine Road, there are two public, there's two trails proposed. One is a public trail that was in response to comments that we received on the DEIS, and it would follow along Sterling Mine Road. And there is a private trail that is interior to the site. There would be a fence separating the two. The public trail generally follows the alignment of the old Sterling Mine Road railroad. This slide has a summary of the various project improvements. As you can see, the bulk of this, all of the structures would be located within the town of Ramapo. The limits of disturbance within the town of Tuxedo would be only two acres, as opposed to 111 in the town of Ramapo, and impervious surface would be limited to .364 acres. In terms of vehicle trips entering and exiting the site, the bulk of the traffic would be coming and going from, this is, this slide, it shows once the project is complete and fully operational. The bulk of the traffic would be entering and exiting the project site in the town of Ramapo at the new main entrance. The resident entrance would be limited to residence gate-controlled during the AM peak hour, it would be approximately 54 vehicles, and during the PM peak hour, it would be approximately 130 vehicles. In terms of construction phasing, we anticipate approximately two months for stage one, that is phases one through five. That involves tree removal and access is proposed from Sterlington Road in the town of Tuxedo. The estimated daily truck trips during that period of time would be approximately 30. And we are proposing, based on comments from the last meeting, to limit the, to cap the number of trucks that could enter the site or exit the site during the AM peak hour and the PM peak hour to five each. During stage two, which is phases six through 10, that would be approximately 18 months. That would involve the major earthwork and blasting, which would all be within the town of Ramapo. And again, initial access would be from Sterlington Road in the town of Tuxedo, which is phases six and seven. And then, once the stabilized construction entrance at the main entrance in the town of Ramapo is finalized, which would be during phase eight, traffic would shift over to that entrance. And during that phase, it's also approximately 30 truck trips per day. During stage three, which is the final stage, phases 11 through 20, that's about 38 months. That's building out all of the structures on the site, that's landscaping and finished surfaces. That access would all be through the new main entrance in the town of Ramapo. And during that period of time, the maximum trucks would be approximately 50. We're happy to take any comments.
Kelly, we typically get comments from the consultants and the rest of the board after the public hearing?
What do you mean after the public hearing? After you open it up to the public?
Well, it's open already. The public hearing is open.
So you can either accept comments from the public first, or you can accept comments from your consultants first. Sometimes getting comments from the consultants first may answer comments that the public may have. It's really your choice.
Okay. So why don't we go to Valerie and Sean then, in that case?
All right. So my memo just sort of is updating the board on the outstanding items that I had questions on last time. First, one of the things that was not clear on the initial submission last time was whether Orange County Department of Public Works provided permits for the full construction, assuming the use of that intersection for secondary private access for residential development. And the applicant did provide information that indeed the permits are for the ultimate secondary private access used for residential development and not just for temporary construction. The existing conditions, one of the things that we recommended last time was that the applicant provide two different layouts, one showing the existing conditions and one showing proposed changes because they were, they were minor in, basically minor in comparison to what was already constructed. And the applicant provided that additional information, presented it tonight, and it's also found in two sheets of your documents. So I highlighted that in my memo. There's no further comments on that, and I think the applicant did provide exactly what it is that they're proposing to change from what was approved previously. The access drive with a couple of concerns that, you know, again, we raised, that the roadway is supposed to have a 20, minimum 20-foot wide access. The applicant asserts this meets New York State Fire Code requirements, and we're just recommending that as a condition of approval would include a final review of the road dimensions in relation to New York State Fire Code. On the wetlands, last time, we had concerns whether some of what was being proposed was going to project an encroachment to the wetlands. Again, the applicant revised their drawings to remove any encroachment into the wetland or wetland buffer areas, so we have no further comments on the wetlands. Landscaping, we had questions last time as to whether the proposed landscaping plan, how did that really, how was that in relation to what was originally approved and what was, and we had a question as to what was actually installed. So again, the applicant provided us the additional information. The proposed landscaping plan in your packet is in addition to the approved landscaping plan. So the one item that we would request is a planting plan should be provided. The roadway easement to maintenance, again, we had a question as to whether the prior access agreements, whether they're still in effect, based upon the newest submission. And yes, they are still in effect and nothing has changed. Emergency access, the applicant did provide a truck turning diagram specific to fire trucks. But again, we just recommend that emergency services should review everything and that the access gate needs to, the emergency services will need to have access to the entrance gate as a condition of approval. And then, construction, we just had one question on that. So the applicant provided additional information on the estimated truck trips for the construction. The applicant estimates 30 daily truck trips, but in their documentation, they noted that the construction trucks will be limited to five entering and five exiting the site from 7:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. and from 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And we just had a question as whether the applicant, the applicant should explain how the remainder of the truck trips will be, will access the site because it doesn't seem to, they specifically talk about 30 truck trips total, but then they only talk about five entering and five exiting the site on certain time periods. So that was it?
Thank you, Valerie. Town engineer, Sean Hoffman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to give the board a little background on the approach, my review approach on this. So as Valerie indicated, we had both performed a comprehensive review when this was last before you, back in December. My comments are structured to really kind of summarize how the applicant addressed those, what the disposition of those comments were. And I similarly suggested conditions that you may want to consider if you move forward with an action on this. I just will say a couple, in terms of housekeeping matters, you did receive a Gmail 239 response from the county. It was local determination. I'll leave to Kelly later to review that with you. And also, at your last meeting, you authorized preparation of a finding statement, your finding statement for seeker. As part of that finding statement, we have returned back to your traffic consultant, who you, who assisted you with your review last year on this, John Canning, and he's participating remotely tonight. So when you get to that portion of you, you may want to have his comments. In terms of my comments relative to site design, Valerie touched on the Orange County Department of Public Works approval. I had requested that site distances be added to this plan set. The applicant provided the previous site distance measurements from 2021. I understand since that time, the site has changed. We just want to make certain that they've obtained those site distances that they thought they would get back in 2021. We discussed the turnaround that's been added. I think that's adequate for passenger cars. They've indicated they will have an intercom at that gate. My concern is that perhaps a delivery truck or somebody errantly goes up there, oversized vehicle cannot turn around at that. Hopefully, the intercom would allow them to enter the site and turn around and be directed out. I had suggested a knock box or similar, that's a rapid entry type device used by emergency services. I think that in addition to the intercom could be conditions of your actions. In terms of lighting, we had discussed lighting last time. There's several pole-mounted fixtures. Your code limits lighting to 20 feet, and the applicant indicated that there is an exemption for roadway lighting. I don't know if this is really what was intended in the code for roadway lighting. When I think of roadway lighting, I think of subdivision roadway lighting, not driveway lighting. You may want to have the applicant get a determination from the building inspector that roadway lighting, this falls in the category of roadway lighting because the code is unclear. Stormwater, the applicant has revised SWIPS as we've asked him to do. There was some, I think there may be some confusion relative to the MS4, which is the regulating agency for the stormwater permit. Town of Ramapo is actually in MS4. That means that they're responsible for reviewing SWIPS and accepting them. Town of Tuxedo is not. So SWIPS are reviewed by the DEC. You also can review it as part of your site plan approval process, and I recommend that if you move forward, you include a condition in there authorizing me to review it. Again, DEC is ultimately responsible, but that way at least I can incorporate my comments and the board's comments into the stormwater review. And the last item I had, again, it's also a housekeeping matter, is the site plan set. This site plan set was a little different than the set you received last time. Some of the plans that were included last time were removed. I didn't know if that was intentional or if they just weren't revised. So I think that the applicant should provide to you a list of all of the plans included in the site plan application and their latest dates of revision, just so it's very clear in the record as to what plans were reviewed and approved as part of this.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. So why don't we go to public comments, questions now? There's one gentleman in the back. We'll do the people in person first. Do you have any, any comment or question, sir? Yes?
Not at this time, but it's very interesting.
Okay. Thank you. So let's go to the people on the Zoom call, and I'll go across the top and work down. Everybody is muted now, so when I call your name, they have to unmute themselves, right? Maria May, you have any comments? Maria is a member of the town board, but she's a member of the public also.
No, I don't have any comments. I'm just listening to you all. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Maria. An RH? That's how it shows up on our screen. Is there an RH? Who wants to comment?
Send a view indication at the lower left corner of the box.
He's still muted. You have to unmute yourself. There you go.
No comment. No comment.
Okay. Thank you. Joshua Neiman?
No comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Jody Hire?
Joel.
Joel.
No comments. Thank you.
TPFYI is the reporter. Do you have any comments? You have to unmute. Well, maybe we'll come back to you if you're having difficulty. Scott Newhart?
He works for me. He's just listening in for Tuxedo Farms.
Okay.
He's not going to have any comments.
We can skip over him.
Right. He should.
Matthew Moradachi?
No comment.
Okay. Thank you. Evan Leslie? You have to unmute.
No comment, other than being supportive of the project.
Okay. Thank you. Chris McCracken?
No comment.
Okay. Thank you. Neil and Louisa French?
No comments. Thank you.
John Canning?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. For the record, John Canning with Kim Lee Horn, the planning board's traffic consultant. I actually have a question for the applicant because they put up a slide that showed in the future build condition with just the residential access at the driveway opposite Eagle Valley Road that is the subject matter at hand. There would be 130 vehicles in the PM peak hour, and I'm looking at the DEIS traffic study, and it actually only had 32 vehicles in the PM peak hour. So I would like them to confirm that it is 130 vehicles or disavowed, and if it is, indicate why. It's a significant difference.
Okay. We'll come back.
Okay. Okay. So let me talk first about the temporary condition for construction. You're all aware that Sterling Mine Road is a busy road. There's a heavy volume of traffic in the morning and the evening peak hours. It has changed as a result of the pandemic. It's probably a little higher in the PM peak hour, it's probably a little lower in the AM peak hour, but it's still very busy. And it's very difficult to get out of Eagle Valley Road during these peak hours because there's a fairly constant stream of traffic on Sterling Mine Road. Construction vehicles are very disruptive at intersections because they're not as quick and efficient as private cars when they turn onto and off of a highway. So I applaud the applicant for offering to restrict or limit the level of truck activity during the peak hours. But I would point out that if there's only 30 trucks trips a day, and they're going to have 10 in the morning peak hour and 10 in the evening peak hour, it's not much of a limitation. My recommendation would be you would limit the number of truck trips to five in the morning in or out combined and five in the afternoon, which is about half of what they were asking for. And to ensure that that is complied with, I would recommend that the applicant be required to install a temporary video camera that would record activity at that location. It would store that information for a month. And if the zoning enforcement official had complaints, he could request the data and he could review it, and the applicant could be directed to correct the situation. In addition, because it's very difficult to make left turns, regardless of whether you have a truck or not, I would recommend that the board considering prohibiting left turns out of the site for trucks. So you would have a sign that says, Trucks, No Left Turn, for the construction period. And similarly, for the right turn in, because it's a very tight radius, I would recommend that the board consider prohibiting right turns into the site so that all trucks delivering vehicles, delivering materials or taking materials to or from the site would approach into part to and from the east on Sterling Mine Road. So those would be my recommendations with regard to the temporary condition of the driveway during construction.
Okay. Thank you, John. Are you ready to answer his question yet or need some more time? Okay. No problem. Okay. Let's move on to David S., who needs to unmute.
Thank you. No comment.
Thank you. Annie, Arnie?
Thank you, Annie.
Annie, Katie? Is that a relation?
Yes.
No comment. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Katie is relieved, I guess. William and Evelyn Fores?
No comment. Thank you.
Mr. English, our supervisor?
No comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. IGUGG? I read that correctly? You have to unmute yourself. There you go. You're unmuted.
Hi. Yes, thank you. My name is Lori Gugino, and I'm a resident on the corner of Juniper Terrace. I'm a little late coming to this, so I wanted to reference the previous comment. The, the volume and the noise of, level of the traffic on the road has definitely increased. And it is very difficult at certain times of the day to get out of Juniper Terrace as well. My first question is, because most of the project, my understanding is, was in Rockland, can you help me understand why the entrance was put into Tuxedo?
I can answer that. The, the approval that we granted in January of '22 was to align the road with Eagle Valley Road, the access road into the site, for the specific purpose to allow Watchtower to repair a bridge that you might have noticed is further inside that road. That bridge is in Ramapo, and Watchtower had all the approvals they needed from Ramapo to repair that bridge, which has now been completed. We specifically put a restriction on that approval that whenever Watchtower wanted to use that roadway for any other purpose, they would have to come back to this board, which they are doing tonight.
So where is the main entrance for the site going to be located?
In the town of Ramapo.
You can, I can answer it or you can...
It's opposite the Eagle Valley Road in, I think that's County Route 68, which is in Rockland, Carolina.
86. This is what's a little confusing. Right now, the sign on that road off of Sterling Mine Road has Route 86, I believe it is. It used to be, I believe... It used to be, I believe, the old Eagle Valley Road. It is not the Eagle Valley Road in Tuxedo. It is still labeled Eagle Valley Road off of Route 17. That's the other end of it, by the post office. So we, that's a little, it's a little confusing.
Is it possible to pull up the plan that you have, and with the cursor, show it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Does the public see what?
She puts it up on the screen.
And then just talk through it.
Yep. So right here is the main entrance to the project site. This is in the town of Ramapo. This road right here is the Eagle Valley Road that's in the town of Ramapo. There is also an Eagle Valley Road in the town of Tuxedo, which is right here. The existing sign for Slotsburg is approximately here. Familiar with that? So the main entrance would be an offset intersection from Eagle Valley Road. And then, as you come around the bend, the proposed entrance would be off of Sterlington Road, the realigned road. There's currently, or there was, an old dirt driveway that came in here, and that would be discontinued and closed. That, that work's actually already been done.
And then Juniper?
Juniper Terrace is, this is one of the entrances here. It's, it's up in this area. If I go back to here, this is the Juniper Terrace neighborhood. So the main entrance to the site is approximately here. The residence entrance is approximately here. So the, the entrances to Juniper Terrace are not directly across from either entrance to the project site.
Okay, so there is going to remain an entrance in Tuxedo that you're calling a residence entrance?
Yes, that's correct. It would be gated, and so it would be for residents only.
Thank you. And my, my second question is, can you help me understand where I could go to find how many, if any, 5G towers are going to be installed on this site?
I believe she's talking about residential units.
No, she's talking about cell towers, the new, the new technology. And the answer, Mr. Katie, is none. And there won't be the older style tower either?
There are no cell towers close to the site.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Lori, thank you. Can we go back to the, I think there might be one more? There we go. Gary Stendowski?
Amen, thank you.
Was that a no comment, Gary?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
I'd like to make a comment. Michelle Lindsay, Eagle Mountain Road, Tuxedo. I enter, I go off of early, Eagle Valley Road to Sterling Mine Road, often making a left-hand turn. And my concern about the construction trucks coming in is that when you're, the traffic coming from New Jersey up and over that hill, I know mentioned was made of sightlines, but people drive very quickly over that hill. If a truck turning left goes into the project, I, my concern is that that takes more time than a car, and that the traffic might not have enough time to slow down if the truck is turning left, if it's coming from New Jersey. That would be my concern about that any construction vehicles entering the site.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. Okay, I, I'll propose to close the public hearing now, and then we'll get my comments and comments from the board members. So can I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. So I'll start off with, with my comments, just expanding on, on what Michelle Lindsay mentioned. Sterling Mine Road going east, down the hill toward the secondary entrance. For starters, it's very poorly signed. It's two lanes going up the hill. As you get over the crest of the hill, that's when you first see the sign that the road is going to narrow, basically where it has already begun to narrow. That sign should be on the other side of the hill, I think, for starters. That's a county highway department issue that, at some point, we're gonna have to address here. The speed limit is, is another issue. A lot of people, as they get over the top of the hill, they see it narrowing down, they'll speed up to get ahead of somebody. So that's, that's one of the issues. Regarding use of this entrance in Tuxedo for construction, when we were giving the earlier approvals for this project, the first phase of the realignment project, there was no mention made that it would ultimately be used, even on a temporary basis, for construction vehicles. The first time we heard that, and correct me if I'm wrong, was in November, when you issued a, a narrative where you said, said you wanted to use it for construction vehicles. The, the time that you proposed to, in your latest narrative, to allow trucks to enter and exit, which I believe is 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning, and 5:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon, correct? I have no data to support this, but I travel that road a lot, and that, to me, seems to be the worst period of time. I think rush hour is basically from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, and 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon. So that timeframe doesn't do it for me. And I want to get the opinion of the rest of the board in a, in a moment. You're also proposing to use that entrance for construction until the first quarter of 2024, 2024. To me, that seems excessive. And as I've mentioned to Mr. Katie, I think the ideal solution would be, and I'm not saying it's an easy solution, would be to aggressively pursue construction of the entrance in Ramapo. So with that, I think those are the comments that I wanted to make. I'll open it up to the board. Let's start with Bill Lemaskin.
Okay, I have two questions. One regarding the traffic engineer's comment of, I think, placing a sign on the property to preclude, to preclude left-hand turns. So my question is, does this board have the authority to require any type of traffic, traffic control on, on that road?
To exit from this site onto that road? Yes. It's a county-owned road, but you're, you're controlling the traffic coming from the site onto that.
So we could mandate no left turns permitted at that, that location?
Yep.
Okay. The other question, which may be a silly one, but I'll ask it anyway. Relative to your slide on the exit, it had a tabulation on it, the exit and entry cars or vehicles. It just seemed to me that those exiting were disproportionately high relative to those entering. I would think there'd be some balance between those coming in and those going out unless you're creating vehicles within the property. I just don't understand that.
That's an alignment of what John was saying.
The trip generation was based on modeling or taking counts at some of Watchtower's other facilities in the region.
Could you put that slide up? Is that possible? So we could see the numbers.
And this is just a summary slide from the FEIS. So the full traffic report is contained in the FEIS, which is available on the town of Ramapo's website, and was provided to this board. And it's a shared driveway as well, so that's another consideration here. Based, one of the-
You had a larger one than that, larger slide. Is that what those, those figures?
This was the-
Just put it in presentation.
Oh, yeah. I can put it in.
Yeah, yeah. You see on AM peak hour? Oh, I'm sorry. On PMP car, the exiting is 156 vehicles exiting, and only 72 entered. Am I just looking at this wrong?
No, it's, it's that there are people entering, more people would be entering the site than exiting the site during the PMP car.
Well, that indicates-
The opposite.
Less entering and more exiting.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I said it backwards. More, less people would be entering the site than exiting the site during the PMP car. This is a live-work facility, but there are other sites within the vicinity of this, so people could be going to some of the other Watchtower sites.
Oh, I see. So that 156 number wouldn't be returning to enter?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
But how did they get there?
They live there? Or, yeah, they could have come in during the course of the day. Oh, so the, another big difference here is, these are only the PM and AM and PM peak hours. There's other trips that happen throughout the day. So these numbers, because we're only looking at one hour in the morning and one hour in the afternoon, they're not necessarily bad.
So there could be the same amount entering at peak hours, entering throughout the course of the day to, to exit 156 or whatever?
We do, in the full traffic study, have the full number of entering and exiting trips, which I can provide in writing to the board after this meeting.
In addition to the residents, and correct me again if I'm wrong, staff will be coming in and out throughout the day. I imagine some staff will be coming from your headquarters on Long Meadow Road periodically?
Yeah, so limited number would, but the vast majority of those working on the site would be living on the same site. But yes, the possibility exists that someone could be coming-
So it's residents and limited staff, let's say.
So between the-
Or also some visitors included. There is a visitor center near the main entrance to the site.
Between the AM and the PMP hours, you would also see people coming in. That would justify the 156 exiting during the PMP car.
Exactly.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. I have another question.
Kelly, I'm neglected to open the regular meeting.
Oh, that's fine. It continues, you don't have to-
Okay, all right, good.
Well, since you said my name, did you have an answer kind of piggybacks off of his question for John Canning's question?
I did find that slide from the traffic study. So we are showing 42 vehicles entering on Sterlington Road and 88 vehicles exiting on Sterlington Road. What I want to confirm with our traffic engineers is that we're not including people headed to sister servants in those bulk numbers, which I would need to get back to the board on.
Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah.
Can you go back to the chart with the peak hours? I'll just keep talking about traffic a little bit more. Okay, so AM peak hour, that's the main site entrance, residence site entrance, so I just want to do some math here. 30 vehicles, this is when everything's said and done, resident entrance only after construction. 30 are entering for that one-hour period in the morning, so it's one every two minutes. And you're proposing that five trucks be allowed to enter during that one hour as well, during construction?
So this, what's shown on the slide right now is after the site is fully occupied. This is after construction is done.
Yep.
So just, so-
I thought I said that, maybe I didn't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so this-
So when it's all said and done, 30 resident, 30 people are using the resident, we're assuming cars.
Right, so it would only be cars, there would be no trucks coming in the resident entrance once the project is complete.
Got it. Okay. During construction, which is what we're looking for right now, you're proposing five trucks be allowed to enter that, use that entrance. How many other vehicles, like other work trucks, or, you know, we're talking passenger cars of that 30, how many are going to be going in and out during construction, as well as those three-axle big trucks? Fewer?
There would probably be more than five passenger cars because it would be construction-
More or less than 30? I'm just trying to get a, a context of the difference between construction phase and your fully functional, mission-complete phase. And then, and, you know, so what's-
I would say less than 30, because typically our workday, we're talking about a 6:30 to 7:30 window, which is the state's recognized peak hour in the morning. And our workday will not start until after that.
Okay.
So those, and, and the, the FEIS that was approved noted that the majority of the workers would be coming in through another means, they would be bringing their own private vehicles to reach the site.
Okay.
And it would be after that 6:30 to 7:30 window. So the point is, also remember, is that a lot of our neighbors share that because of their St. Joseph's care home that a lot in our community use to, for, for care of their parents and such. So a lot of that is people that are bringing family members, maybe they're early in the morning, or picking them up in the afternoon, or visiting, or whatever, whatever they're doing. So we don't have control much over that, we just have the, the numbers from the traffic study.
Well, I'm just trying to kind of clarify what the difference between the construction phase is gonna look like for traffic on that road versus when it's all said and done, because it appears we're very concerned about construction impacts. And so I'm trying to decide, is it a bigger disruption to have five trucks come into the facility during that peak hour, or 30 passenger cars, which is what would happen a year later when it's done? So I don't necessarily expect you to answer that, I just want to make sure that what I'm saying is what you believe to be true as far as numbers and when that occurs. And then I do have a question. You had mentioned the state says the peak hour is 7:30, 8:30, and 5:00 to 6:00. What did the traffic study say was the peak hour?
I will double check that in a second.
And while you're looking that up, I just, I have another question on the drive. The 20-foot width of the entrance, so I know typically the fire truck is a little more than 10 feet mirror to mirror, and if you have construction vehicles going down a 20-foot drive, if one's coming and one's going, I don't know how close they're gonna have to get, or how much off the road they're gonna have to get to pass each other. So I think in the engineer and Valerie's remarks, something that should be considered as well, if you're trying to make this a construction entrance, will accommodate full-size construction, construction trucks, sorry.
While you're looking that up, if you could give us also the date of that traffic study?
The traffic study was last updated in 2021 as part of the FEIS, approximately-
In what month?
Over the summer of 2021.
Okay. So we didn't have the school traffic during the summer?
Oh, well, there were spot counts conducted during school times.
In what, in 2021?
In 2021. And we also, because of COVID, did some adjustments on that as well.
Okay.
The weekday morning peak hour is 7:15 to 8:15 a.m. The weekday afternoon peak hour is 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. And the Saturday midday peak, peak hour is 12:00 noon to 1:00 p.m.
Okay. And then if, if I may ask John, our traffic engineer, if he has any comments based on my comments? John, did you hear me?
I did. I'm trying to get back to my screen, because I was looking at the town of Ramapo's website for the FEIS traffic study. I found it, but I wasn't able to open the link. First of all, with regard to the peak hour, I did look at traffic volumes on Sterling Mine Road from 2014 through 2020. And, and I mentioned, I meant to mention it earlier, but I forgot. I would recommend that the morning peak period be from 7:15 to 8:45, which is 90 minutes, based on looking at the data. There are, basically in the morning, there's two hours that are similar around the same period. And so what you've got is kind of a flat plateau in there. And similarly, in the evening, and I know the chairman, I think chair, Mr. Chairman, you said 4:00 to 6:00. I probably would be a little more lenient and say 4:30 to 6:00, but there's not much difference between us. The one, that, that's on construction. The one concern that I do have is I've looked at the analysis that was in the DEIS for Sterling Mine Road at Eagle Valley Road and the site driveway, and it had 32 trips coming out of Sterling, relocated Sterlington Road, in or out. There were actually, I think, I think it was 13 exiting. No, it was 21 exiting, 13 right and, and eight left. No, it was 21 exiting, 13 right and and eight left. And even in that condition, the delay on the opposing approach, which is Eagle Valley Road, was measured at 456 seconds, which is, I don't know, eight minutes. So that number is not right, but it's it's definitely a much longer delay. And if the applicant is telling us now that it's not 21 vehicles coming out, it's 88 plus whatever's coming out of Sterling, the the Sisters of Convent in there. I am honestly concerned that that would be a bigger impact to Eagle Valley Road than I had anticipated at this point because I had not realized and seen the volume of data that was put up on the screen. Honestly, I'm concerned about it.
I'd share that concern too. I think I need a little bit more clarity on how that whole intersection is impacted based on the construction phase and as well as the steady state post-construction phase.
Do we know where the counters were placed on Sterling Mine Road for this, for these studies?
Yes. They were placed in multiple locations, west of Eagle Valley, east of Cranbury, and east of Hamilton. And I presume Hamilton, because I don't know where it is, I looked for it, is kind of the extension of Hamilton that's on the on the north side as well, and it may have cut through in the past and is now a private driveway.
Now, John, when you say Eagle Valley, is this the Tuxedo Eagle Valley, just to be clear?
Yeah, you're, that's a hard question. I don't know.
Wouldn't they use Route 80 something if it was the Ramapo?
Not necessarily. There's confusion about that.
Well, I just want to share the concern I have. If I under, if I recall correctly, the residential entrance will be used as a construction entrance for two years, and then it'll shift for three years of construction to the main entrance. So I support what John's saying. I don't really understand the, what's driving that, why that can't shift. That's two years. That is a huge inconvenience at that intersection. It's tough now. So with that, it is just a long time. I could see like six months, nine months, because that, in the grand scheme of things, people can put up with that for a certain amount of time, but two years, that's a lot. The other thing is more of a would like to see than a question per se, but I'd like to see the plan, if you could, that shows the turnaround that you added.
Near the gate.
Yeah, near the residential gate. I think it just went by quickly and I didn't get a chance to see it. And maybe you can show it with your cursor as well.
Sure.
Because it's a small plan. And Chris, to your question about the width of the road, I get what you're saying, but I'd hate to see that road get wider. So if it is being used for construction, there would need to be a system where one's waiting while another's coming in. I just, I personally wouldn't want to see a bigger road.
If I could comment on that one point, is Ashley's getting the computer up. I could take a look at that during construction. And what the applicant proposes during construction is a staging area along the east-to- west side. So if they do, there would be some, you know, enough room for two vehicles to pass utilizing that staging area to kind of go off on the side. So I don't think you should increase the width on a permanent basis because of that temporary condition because of the staging area.
Okay, perfect.
That makes sense.
So the turnaround would be right here, and the gate, residential gate would be right here. And and I do want to clarify two things. The proposed use of this entrance for construction purposes was disclosed in both the DEIS and the FEIS. So that was circulated to this board at that time.
Can you just make it a little bit bigger possibly? Maybe just Ctrl plus.
I don't believe we ever got a solution to that, did we?
As an involved agency.
No, we did. We did, we had input to that too. Those are Ramapo documents, but we had input to it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I was able to open the FEIS file for the traffic study. And the traffic study in the post-construction condition does indicate that they have 129 vehicles headed northbound on Sterling, relocated Stirlington Road. It indicates a level of service F on the northbound approach and a level of service F on the southbound approach. The level of service F on the southbound approach has a delay of over 300 seconds. It basically says 322 seconds. I I will say, and we talked about this last year when I was there, about signal warrants. And at the time, there was a discussion that the warrants were not met, but looking at the 129 vehicles that are supposed to go northbound on on Sterling, relocated Stirlington Road, I suspect that the warrants would be met with that level of traffic activity. I know the applicant has put forward, correct me if I'm wrong, that they would monitor the intersection and that if a signal is warranted, they would pay their fair share contribution to the installation of a signal. There are two things that come to mind in that regard now. Just looking at these numbers, I'd like to see a signal warrant based on these numbers to see if a signal is warranted based just purely on the projections. And with regard to the fair share contribution, I would offer the following. The reason that a signal is not warranted there now is not because of Sterling Mine Road traffic. The level of traffic on Sterling Mine Road is sufficient to warrant a signal. But you also need to have the level of traffic on the side streets, which are Eagle Mine Road and relocated Stirlington Road. And today, there's not that level of traffic activity on those side streets to warrant a signal. In the future, if a signal is warranted, it will be because there has been an increase in traffic on either Stirlington Road or Eagle Valley Road. And the, and that's Eagle Valley Road, Tuxedo, to be clear. The only reason there would be an increase in traffic on either of those two roads would be either because of this development or because of development on the adjacent parcel that's served by by Stirlington Road, which is the sister's property. Or if there was development on Eagle Valley Road or in that neighborhood. For example, there's a golf course in there, and who knows what will happen in the future, but potentially the golf course could close and they could put housing or something in there. So with regard to fair share, the the need for the signal is there now, it doesn't meet the warrants. If the warrants are met, it will be because either of this prod, if this project drives it or because some other project that would be before either this board or perhaps even the village of Tuxedo Park. So that the fair share contribution, if a signal is to be installed, would be based on this project and whatever other project was identified at the time that the need was confirmed. If that is helpful, I hope so, I hope it's clear.
Thank you, John. Ashley, I know you mentioned when the latest traffic study was done, was that '21 or '22?
She said '21.
It was '21.
Yeah, summer.
Yeah, it was, the FEIS was adopted in approximately October of 2022, but the bulk of the work was prepared towards the end of 2021.
Okay.
I believe we completed the initial draft in September of 2021.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anything else?
I just wanted to, you were going to enlarge the plan for me?
Yes, and I did, for some reason it's not showing up on the screen. Try, I, try again.
Oh, that's much better.
It's not a, it's not a PDF, so it's harder to zoom. Oh, here we go.
There you go.
All right, so this is where the turnaround would be and the gate would be right here.
Okay. So they would pull in and then back out.
Right, but all of this would occur on the project site itself, it would not happen on Stirlington Road.
Okay, thank you.
Ned, your comments, thoughts?
They always said that this was a temporary entrance, and they always swore.
Well, it it was proposed to be a permanent entrance when the facility is completed. Or access and ingress for residents and staff.
The county came back and said that they would like to see a, aroundabout there, if they were going to allow any traffic to be onto.
Ned, I believe that ship has sailed. That that comment was an old comment from the county. They suggested that before any of the work had been done on that entrance. And that was evaluated, we talked about it at this board. We didn't have to do it, it wasn't a requirement.
I agree, I agree, because we were. I agree with the traffic issues that are, have been presented. I'm more into looking out for the safety of everybody in the community, including yours, when they get onto Stirling Mine Road or getting onto the property. I agree, I would like to see an aggressive effort to be made for the eastern part of your entrance, so that the major part, the big one, do that first, get that done, you know, and then we'll see what we can do for you later. That's the only comment.
Okay, thank you, Ned. Phil?
I think the traffic study information handled by the gentleman is pretty accurate. I like the restrictive entrance and exit turning directions. I think that that could really slow that, really improve the the waiting time. I also think that if there's any permission to use the road for construction, as has been requested, that nine to four would be more appropriate. Gives about a 30-minute buffer to to the peak. And that combined with some finite limitation of the number of trucks, I'm not qualified to say how many, but are small enough so that the waiting time doesn't calculate to more than three or four minutes. I think, I think that it might, there might even be benefit to looking at it for a finite amount of time and seeing what actually happens so that for the, for the balance of the time period, we have a little more data. Right now, we're talking about what we think is going to happen if, we could do a very limited, we could give them something, but give a limited experiment for ourselves to really see how it works with enough hours and enough hour restrictions and enough turning restrictions. Try to take our best shot at it and see if we can make something that works and learn something as well.
Okay, anything else, Bill? All right, thanks, Bill. Justin?
So what's the condition at the the Sloesberg entrance? Like the final condition, is there going to be a signal or, sorry, was that what he was talking about earlier, the signal warrant? Is, are we talking about setting the other intersection or?
So the, the signal warrant analysis that would be done by Watchtower would be in the town of Tuxedo. And it would be six months after full occupancy of the project site. The other entrance is an offset unsignalized intersection.
Unsignalized?
Unsignalized.
Okay. And that's all compliant with traffic studies and there's enough capacity there for no major slowdowns?
There are, there are mitigations in place from another project in the vicinity.
Okay. Because one thing is now even if we push construction access down the road till the final entrance is complete, we still have the traffic issues on the road because the trucks are going through the same, on the same road, basically, so.
So one benefit of using the Tuxedo entrance during construction is that there already are improvements in place at that intersection. There already is a left turn pocket that was installed, and that would significantly help the trucks turning in and out of the site and keeping them from backing up. It'll be quite some time until the left turn pocket at the intersection in the town of Ramapo would be installed.
So, you know, echoing what Ned said, you know, it's one thing, the the inconvenience of the traffic, but it's another thing if, you know, we're signing up for a condition that's not entirely safe. You know, this is a little road and it's not really a as friendly to the big trucks turning into the site with, and who looked and brought up the the speed limit, the narrowing traffic lanes. It gives me worry to make a situation that might be unsafe, so.
The safest entrance to use today is the entrance that come, that's in the town of Tuxedo because there isn't existing.
Today, but the future entrance is going to be larger, a better entrance for trucks because it's built for trucks in the final condition, right?
Yes, that is the entrance that will be used by.
And there's better sightlines over there and.
Well, there are sightlines at this intersection because they were created when the intersection was relined.
Okay. So that, I'll just end on that, I mean, that would be my concern if 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 there's a, something unsafe about this condition that would be safer at the final entrance traffic-wise, you know, we're going to wind up with the same number of trucks at one entrance as the other.
I think we are. I'm sorry, just to speak to that, just and also to your comments, Mr. Minsky and Mr. Google, Chris as well, the, I think there were a couple of really salient comments made by Mr. Canning. Restricting left-hand turns out of this toward New Jersey, toward Long Meadow Road off from from our site is definitely something under our control and that we could do. Restricting our neighbors that are leaving from the St. Joseph's home, for them not to make a left-hand turn, I don't speak for them, but I think for construction traffic, I think we could definitely make that restriction. We could also make a restriction on any delivery trucks coming to use, that would use this site in the early phases of the job, would do so coming from Route 17 and thus only be making a left-hand turn on Sterling Mine Road as opposed to coming down Sterling, that hill of Sterling Mine Road and then making a right into those. Very reasonable and very logical restrictions that we would be more than willing to accept. What we wrote into our narrative was just mimicking something else that the Tuxedo Town Board had put into restrictions on another project recently in in the town. But the restrictions on five vehicles during that period of time, or the period of time that you've recommended, also would be certainly reasonable restriction. As far as the duration of that activity, we don't see a need for it for two years. We we hope that in the first quarter of 2024, which we're in January of 2023 now, so so we're a little over a year, and we recognize and we respect your desire to see it move quicker than that. We would just, we just appeal to the board as we did at the beginning. One of the biggest things that shortens this whole duration and the impact on everyone is our ability to get in there and use this, to at least access the site to do tree felling during this season that we have in front of us right now. We lose a big section of this time between now and end of March, and it's definitely going to kick everything over into the next season, which just lengthens the plan for everyone. So we hope that there's some way that we can do something that would meet the board's pleasure to enable us to get in and use that. This, as our only, as our only means of access. The site, safety was the issue originally. Safety was the reason why your board and also the county recommended that we realign the legacy entrance that was there, which went to into Sterling Mine Road in another location, was to make that a safer junction and a four-way junction. So we hope we've made a big leap in that, and we certainly don't want to create a situation that's unsafe for ourselves or anyone.
And so I guess my next comment would be the, the construction activity occurring through the use of this entrance, you know, it starts with the tree clearing and the earthwork. Will it still be in use once you get to the major construction phase? Because that's going to be a lot more people come to the site.
No, during the main construction phase, the main entrance would be used. That's where the bulk of the trucks are going to be entering and exiting because that's when. That's where the bulk of the trucks are going to be entering and exiting because that's when they'll be bringing in materials. And one of the big changes between the DEIS and the FEIS was to balance the cut and fill on the project site. So that there will, that significantly reduce the number of trucks that would be entering during that phase. And what's, one of the things that's critical to being able to do the tree clearing this winter. That's all part of the, you know, extended construction time period and the balancing of the cut and fill was to be able to start on this end and work our way through.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, the applicants talked about the tree clearing restrictions, maybe if you like, they could just describe for you what that restriction is relative to species, right?
Yes, it's to protect the northern long-eared bat. So tree clearing can only occur during the winter months when the bats are hibernating and that period ends on March thirty-first.
So if they don't clear substantial portion of the site by this March thirty-first, they would have to wait to November first, right, to do tree clearing? So that's where the project stretches.
What is remaining on our on our side in terms of the permission to do that work?
What we're discussing this evening.
Pardon me?
What we're discussing this evening?
It would be adopting the amended, or your finding statement? And it would be lifting the condition on your existing approval. That prohibits the use of this entrance for tree clearing purposes.
Well, I think it would actually be more than that because that original approval was for the realignment of that road. That was in there as a footnote so that it was limiting that resolution to that, it would actually be adopting a new resolution of our approval.
Yes, there's actually two things that we're asking for and that we're asking the board to consider. We're bifurcating with the time limitation that we do have with respect to the tree clearing. And so what we're asking is as quickly as the board is comfortable. Make the restriction with respect to using that construction road for tree clearing. And then a little further on, if you need to, we can talk about the full site plan. So that's that's where we're talking about in terms of bifurcating. We don't necessarily need to get a full site plan approval at this point. Okay, we can wait on that if there are still more things, for example. Concerns about the width of the road, concerns about the the light extensions. If there's concerns still with respect to landscaping, all of that, we could take a little more time on. But the lifting of the temporary, the lifting of the restriction for use for clearing for trees is something that. We need to get now, actually, in order to be able to get the trees cleared this season and not stretch into the winter of twenty-three, twenty-four.
Anything else, Justin?
All right, that's all, thanks.
Susan?
I have a couple of questions. First one is, do you anticipate any lane closures like there were when when everything was being lined up? And if yes, during the construction phase, if yes, like how long would they be? Would there be advanced warning of those? Any any information about that?
We don't anticipate any further lane closures in the town of Tuxedo. There likely would be some in the town of Ramapo. And it would, I don't I don't have the exact timing on that right now. We'd have to coordinate that with Rockland County.
And that'll be further down when you're talking about the the full construction?
Yes, it would be for the construction of the main entrance.
Okay. So if I understood what you just said, because I was gonna ask about this, with the the need to get the trees cleared before the end of March. You're talking about a two and a half month period between now and then, right, to get everything going? So are you suggesting that there's a way we let you do that and that would get you started? And then we would look at the longer term, twelve, fourteen months after that? Is that what you're, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, that that's it. If we could get the approval to be able to access that to do the tree clearing, we, that would, that would take us through the end of March. We don't expect to have a site plan approval to roll over into the other activities immediately after that. But it's this window that Mr. Hoffman mentioned that's critical.
But the twenty-four months could become smaller.
It would become smaller.
Yeah.
Could we focus on the specific issues that would preclude them from doing that?
Yeah, I think the applicant summed it up nicely. There's the secret finding statement that I think needs to be adopted by this board. And then there's also if it's not a new site plan approval, it's an amendment of your previous site plan approval to allow tree clearing.
To allow use of the property or access to the construction vehicles to allow the tree clearing. It's it's important to note that the clearing, as Sean and I were just talking about it, is not taking place on this property. The tree clearing is actually on another property, so it's not a clearing permit. It would be an amended cyclin to allow this access to actually be used for construction, for purposes of construction vehicles.
Now, John, I know we have talked about this and it was brought up tonight too, where the two lanes go into one coming down the hill on Sterling Mine. In front of the property and how the sign is is really useless and how people tend to speed up and create issues coming down that hill. I've seen more than one person nearly crash. But what would it take for us? Is that something that we would do to go to Orange County? Because that would help improve some of the safety of that issue.
We we would have to work with the county on that, right?
The way the way I've seen it done in the past is if you think that it's something that you'd like, you would have the applicant petition the town board to write to the county. It can't come from the planning board and really can't come from the applicant. So it could come from the town board and they could, they could ask for it. The county would likely study it and then make a decision whether they want to make that change or not.
How. How efficient and quickly is the county turning something like that around?
I think that question's been answered by the laughter.
Say again, I'm sorry.
I think that question's just been answered.
Start the process.
Like everything else, they have other areas in the county, this may not be a priority for them. I'm sure they're aware of it, particularly in light of this project. Whether they have any plans for it, I don't know. You've had discussions with the county, I'm sure, multiple times about the project. Have they indicated to you that there's any work in their pipeline that would address this concern?
No, they haven't. It was, it was not easy to get the approval through as everyone knows. To get them and we still have work that we're waiting on, so it's, it's not easy. I can commiserate with Mr. Hoffman.
Anything else, Susan?
Just one other clarification. So the three-month time period for the tree clearing. The other end, the main entrance, I mean, the reason you need to come in is because there's no road there yet, I understand that. The time period before you could potentially, by doing, if you did the tree clearing now, does that speed up work on the other end simultaneously?
Yes, yes, it does. It definitely does as opposed to having to wait until November to be able to get that started.
So that you could start on the the Ramapo end? At the same time you're doing the tree part?
Well, what we're saying is if we don't, if we're not, because our only access point is on this side of the site right now.
Understand, yep.
If we can't get it done in the next two and a half months, that gets, any start gets pushed to November. Which then pushes our tree clearing arrival on the other side of the site that much farther down. If that made any sense.
It makes sense, I'm just trying to understand, does it gain you, like, does can stuff then? I don't, I'm obviously not an engineer. I don't, it it can things be done simultaneously, I guess, is what I'm asking. Like if if you're doing the tree clearing, coming in through Tuxedo. Getting that done now, does it allow you to do anything on the other end?
First, we have to get the trees cleared and there are limitations from the DEC on how many acres of trees can be cleared at a time.
Got it.
So we can't start at two ends of the site and try to make quick work of it. We wish we could.
Yep.
But there are limitations to the phasing of that tree removal.
That's what I was asking, okay.
Erosion control, et cetera, which Mr. Hoffman knows more, much better than I.
Thank you.
We're actually getting a waiver, receiving a waiver from DEC to allow us to to clear more than would normally be allowed at one time.
Okay. To make it by that March thirty-first?
Correct.
Okay.
And then there's all sorts of benefits to doing it the way that people always having to cut and fill and efficiencies.
Yep. Thank you.
To follow up on the tree clearing or what you're asking for tonight for access to do tree clearing. This board gave you permission to realign a road and do all kinds of construction. Is, if we give you permission to use that road for access for tree clearing, would that be any more or less disruptive? Than the entire construction project that you've done to date at that site?
I think it's safe to say it'd be much less disruptive than what was done there because of the lane closures that we had to do, the flagmen. I mean, you could see that, you know, there were days when, I hate to say it because I take Sterling Mine Road myself. And the traffic was backed up all the way past Long Meadow Road at times because of having to be restricted. So that, none of that opposed to take place any longer. This would just be the vehicles entering the road.
All right, let me, let me throw something out for the consideration of the board. I I'd just like to define this tree clearing business. There's a difference, there's tree felling, cutting them down, and there's tree removal from the site. I believe you had no intention during this winter period of taking out the stumps, is that correct?
That's correct.
So it is possible then, you could fell the trees and leave them there. For the immediate future, whatever that is, a few months.
I don't know if we could leave them there two months, but.
There's erosion and how I'm aware, it's hard to talk like an engineer, but as I understand it. Even though we're not removing stumps, we're just cutting the trees down at at the stump. There's still soil and erosion control measures.
The equipment.
We have to undertake the stabilization measures and leaving the trees where they are may interfere with with much of that. So there there may have to be removals.
But are you moving them off-site or stacking them somewhere on-site?
It's a matter of whether or not there's a place to to stack them on-site. Talking about a hundred and nineteen acres, thirteen acres.
Do you have any feeling, I know it's a tough question, how many trees you would be cutting down?
Eight thousand, three hundred and something. We actually have a count.
Is that all at once or this phase?
Well, that's the full site. Okay, which will be done in five phases.
Okay.
And you've got to do it in that window to accommodate the bats.
And you're trying to get a variance so that you can do four thousand?
No, no, the idea is, so you can do twenty-five acres at a time.
Okay.
As opposed to five acres.
Okay, gotcha.
And we're working with Ramapo, Ramapo's MS four officer is is just about there.
The the background behind that is DEC feels, and I presume that they're right in this assumption, that if you have more than five acres of land disturbed at any one time. There's a greater chance that you could have sedimentation and erosion off of that site. It just gets too big to kind of manage. So they try to limit it to less than five acres. They allow in certain instances for you to exceed that, but there's additional work that you need to do under their general permit. And that's what the applicant's talking about.
Right. And that's all addressed in the SWIP, addressed to the tree car.
That's a lot of tree cutting, even in the window if you get it, isn't it? It's a hustle.
So worst case, you're cutting the trees down, loading them on trucks and and taking them off-site.
Yeah, we have some in our SWIP that we've submitted to the town of MS four in Ramapo. We have some processing places on the site. Some of the trees, depending if they're diseased trees or other, they might be processed on-site mulched. And that mulch used for sediment control and erosion control, that would avoid that body of trees from ever leaving the site.
Right.
But then some of the other timber would be taken down and then stripped and if that can be, you know, used for other purposes.
Since all the trees to be cut are on Ramapo property. Kelly, I believe we could not restrict when that cutting could take place, can we?
No, the the.
We would only be able to restrict when they would exit from the Tuxedo Road. Are you envisioning this cutting process to be a seven-day-a-week operation?
I believe there are restrictions on the hours that we can do construction activities, both in Tuxedo and Ramapo.
There's restrictions on the hours, but it doesn't restrict weekends as far as the way I read it. I might be wrong, but.
But can't we do that?
No, we can only restrict them.
We do have to use our Tuxedo entrance.
Saturday and Sunday, yeah. We don't have the entrance then.
We're by six days.
Okay, no Sundays apparently.
Correct.
Or holidays. Okay. Let me. If we severely restricted you when you could remove trees, remove or have trucks to remove them. I don't like the seven to nine and the four to six in the afternoon. I don't like those times. Because I think it's too busy and our consultant basically agreed with the time. He expanded it a little from that one hour each period. Let me get the opinion of the board if we restricted it from like ten to two, ten to three. And a limited number of trucks per hour taking trees out. And no trucks taking anything out Saturday, Sunday, holidays. And only until March thirty-first. And then we would have to revisit where you are and what we would want to do. Again, I don't like it, I don't think any of the board likes this first quarter of twenty-four business. I think that's fair to say.
Right.
So that's what I would, I would propose. I I sympathize with your time restraints. I think this would give you a, an opportunity to do a lot of it. I would like to see, you know, the the eight to eight at night is your window. That seems a little late to me too, I know we can't, we can't restrict that. But this tree cutting is is a noisy operation. You bring in this logging equipment like you used for the roadway work. Very efficient, but also noisy. So I don't know, what what do people think about that?
John has his. Yeah, I was hoping to hear his opinion.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to offer, and maybe this is not possible, but the state restriction is that you cannot cut trees down after March thirty-first. No, no, you know what, I'm confusing myself, so pardon me. Never mind. Well, no, no, here, no, here's where I was going with that. They could, they could cut, they could cut trees down until March thirty-first and they could stack them up. If they couldn't get them out fast enough, they could stack them up and they could still haul them out after March thirty-first. That's all I was going to offer, that they they could get in there whenever you give permission and they could cut trees down. And then they could haul them out. They wouldn't have to have them haul hauled out by March thirty-first.
And in fact, our period of land continues until sometime in April, I believe, then? And of April. We can't fell trees after March thirty-first, but there's still stabilization and other activities that are associated with the felling that continue until the end of April.
What what influence the restrictions the other, the other municipality have on on your tree cutting activities?
Tree cutting activity?
What do you want to do to remove the trees?
For this window of opportunity, just just working hours, hours of operation.
Oh, I see, nothing else?
So what do what do we think about restricting it to kind of the midday hours, nine to three, ten to three?
I think that's great, there's no, there's no rush to take the trees off the site. You can find a place to stack them, you could continue to move them off into the summer and it keeps all the trucks off the road during rush hour.
Well, I'm supportive of what we can do to try to help out without violating common sense or any rules, regulations or laws.
I I broached the question to to Sean last time, I think. Getting permission from the DEC to cut after March thirty-first and that apparently is very difficult to do.
Yeah, I don't think it's likely.
But I think the nine to three, no Saturday and Sunday and holidays is better than nothing at all.
We don't need our permission to cut the trees there, just talking about the road.
Right, just the re, just the removal, we can't, we can't stop you from cutting. Just remove it.
And I guess the other question about timing is, not that this is something they'd want, but they could come in before six AM.
How many man days it takes to cut down X number of trees?
Before six AM and or after nine?
It's about two, it's about two weeks per phase. So I think our activities are scheduled to start like on twenty-third of this month, actually. So I think our activities are scheduled to start like on twenty-third of this month, the actual tree felling. If, you know, and we will be finished by the third.
Doing the arithmetic.
Is it a map where you have the phases and the tree removal that you can show, that might be helpful?
Doing the arithmetic of the hours we're talking about.
Yeah.
Would that, would that enable you to dovetail in the estimate? Be successful?
The, the hours that you're talking about are not restrictions on our felling activities there.
It's just getting the site in and out.
But that's part of, that's part of the process, though.
It, it is, it is, but. Even if you restrict truck movements to say nine to three, we can still have felling going on at, you know, starting at eight o'clock and continuing as however late Ramapo allows it to happen.
Yes, it seems, it seems that that wouldn't be restrictive as far as our ability to get the site cleared in these couple of months.
And considering we're talking about much of months, I doubt that there's much going to go on after six o'clock at night.
This is the summary of the phasing plan, so it would start, we, all the tree felling would be within the town of Ramapo, and it would, we would work our way across the site, roughly twenty to twenty-five acre sections at a time. No more than twenty-five acres at any point.
Is that one phase per year?
No, these are two-week phases. This is just the tree clearing.
So all that clearing happens this year?
Yes, all by March.
In terms of the eight o'clock, I would think felling trees in the dark would be a bit dangerous.
The, the part, the phase that intersects with mine in Ramapo. Could you just put that one back? What, what phase is that?
That's the, the second, or well, the third phase.
That's the third phase. So when you would start that third phase, you're very close to Sterling Mine Road. Is that an opportunity to start using that entrance into the site?
Not necessarily, because there's a significant amount of cut and fill and grading that needs to occur, and that can't occur until all of the tree clearing is done. We need to make sure that we're balancing, or that we're closing out each one of these phases before we move on. And we don't have site plan approval, and we don't have the permits from.
But they're letting, Ramapo's letting you to cut eight thousand trees down without site plan approval?
Well, the town board granted a special permit, and it was.
And they're also making, they're also making much more, about three million dollars for bonds.
So you can replace the trees if you.
Exactly.
Yeah, but that's, yes, you replace them with ten, fifteen foot tall, it's not going to be the same. Well, whatever, that's, that, we can't, we can't impact.
We're, we're specifically talking about restricting tractor-trailers hauling trees out from nine to three, right? And then, so what, what other trucks would we expect to see turning in to do the work? Bucket trucks, or is it really just, you know, chainsaw?
There will be some buckets trucks that go in to do the erosion control measures, to put some of the silt fencing in, maybe to do some of the temporary sediment logs that have to go up.
Those are just buckets.
Yeah, so those are, those are activities that have to be done gradually across the site to make sure there's no erosion issues.
So I, I wouldn't imagine when you're cutting, there's a lot of people. You know, they would be coming in with pickup trucks, I would imagine.
Exit, the workers exit.
The workers?
Yes. They wouldn't be multi-axle vehicles, just.
So Kelly, what, what would, what type of, we would need a resolution saying nine to three, no, no weekends?
Yes, so I think, well, the first thing that you would need is your finding statement. I gave you a draft of that, I know the applicant had comments on it. I also received comments from Sean and John Cannon. So those, I think, some of, the mitigation findings would then have to be modified to incorporate those items that were discussed tonight, that John had also mentioned specifically the left turn lanes, and the limiting the number of vehicles. I don't know if you want, after this last discussion, to limit the number of vehicles or just limit the hours to.
I think it would be both.
Okay, so between nine AM and three PM, how many trucks per hour?
Mister Chairman, I'm sorry, what I think you're talking about, Kelly, is in those times outside of nine and three, before nine and after three, there'd be a limitation, the chairman's saying there's a restriction with no, is that right?
Other than pickup, two, two axle vehicles would be okay.
Okay, so.
Pickup trucks are okay, I mean, you've been doing that all along.
So the first thing then would be to adopt the finding statement amended based on your discussions this evening. Typically, I like to go through all the changes one by one, but might not be able to do that because I haven't been modifying it as you've been discussing it, but it would be modified as discussed tonight. And then what you would do, I think, would be to adopt an amended site plan resolution based on the last resolution that you did, which was a resolution of conditional approval for site plan for the consolidation and realignment of the driveway for the two parcels. So then that would be amended to permit construction access, and we would incorporate these conditions into that. And then a second site plan would have to be adopted at some point in the future that Mr. Mania was talking about, you know, over the next couple of months for the entire site plan, and that would be incorporating the other conditions that Sean and Valerie had in there most.
So we couldn't just pass a standalone resolution for the, the limited truck movement? And that's it, rather than going through the finding state, we, we would have to approve the finding statement?
Yeah, you have to complete SEACR first. The other option potentially would be, because your prior decision was a negative declaration, it was an unlisted action. But in order to reaffirm that negative declaration, you would be taking a look at all these traffic impacts, which are already incorporated into the finding statement. So I don't think that you would actually be able to just reaffirm the negative declaration. I think you'd have to open SEACR and look at those traffic impacts, which is why it makes more sense to complete the finding statement.
Okay, well, why don't we, why don't we give that a, a shot then? Just a couple of things about the finding statement. The vast majority of the finding statement has been prepared by Ramapo, and we really can't change anything in that, correct?
Right, most of it are findings that they made, it's consistent with the studies that are done. If there's something that you have, you know, a big issue with, that's relative to the property in Tuxedo, you can take a look at that, or if you don't want it in there at all because it's specific to Ramapo, we can take that out. I left a lot of that in for consistency, but then modified it to address the areas that are in Tuxedo, to make sure that they were complying with any blasting protocols of the town, any noise protocols of the town of Tuxedo, as well as Ramapo.
And again, we can't restrict anything that they're doing in Ramapo, like hours of construction or anything. Just, just the tuxedo portion, the, the roadway, basically.
Yes.
Could, could we add a condition to request signage? Like that says caution trucks entering or something on the road to maybe, we'll see.
Some monitoring of some kind.
I mean, I know we can't get county signage, but maybe just temporary construction signage that.
Similar to what they did when they, when they did the work.
Yeah.
They had, they had signs on Sterling Mine Road.
What I would do, just make a dovetail into the county, is make the app install any signage as required by the Orange County Department of Approval Works. You don't want to give them a, a conditional requirement that the county will not allow, right?
Right, right, yeah, makes sense.
Okay, so hopefully, most of you or all of you have reviewed the finding statement. Let's start with Susan this time, anything you would like to add? And again, it's limited to the tuxedo portion of it.
No, my notes were really all around the, the traffic issues, so I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Justin?
Uh, no, no further comments.
No?
I'm okay, I'm leaving on the traffic issues.
Okay, Ed?
I'm with the time constraints that you had suggested, I'm supporting what your ideas on.
Okay, Susan? Chris?
Nothing for me.
No comments?
No?
Did you have any?
Yeah, you had added on page thirty-four, eight to eight and nine to eight as the hours that things would be permitted.
Yeah, that came, and I was.
That came directly from the Ramapo.
No, that came from your town of Tuxedo Code. However, that's just for the noise. With regards to what was discussed tonight, that would then have to be, that would be the grade updated for the traffic portion. But for the noise activity, I wanted to make sure that if it's super noisy and you can hear it in Tuxedo, it still needs to comply with the Tuxedo noise ordinance.
Well, I, I think we could hear it, but it would probably be under the limit.
That's based on decibel level, isn't it?
It's usually seventy-five decibels, but I'm not sure what the.
We could, we could put a condition in there to have a, another traffic study sooner rather than later?
Mister Chairman, I think it's actually in there, that they.
No, the. The, it's post-completion, within six months post-completion of the entire project, which is six years from now. That seems too late to me. So could we put something in there that during twenty-twenty-three, we could have another traffic study done? With the, with the purpose of focusing on the signal at Eagle Valley Road and, and the new road?
Well, I think it would depend really on when you wanted to do it, and maybe that would be issuance of building permits or issuance of COs, because I think that the point would be when people are actually living there on-site. And I don't know when they're actually going to start or complete any of the construction in terms of their phasing for when people would actually move on-site. So for example, I would think that twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four would probably be too soon, but I don't know when you guys are looking to have people live there.
Not, not that soon, I would think.
That would be really fast, but.
Mister Chairman, I just want to understand the, the thought process. So are you saying that what you're, what you think is that they are eventually going to need the warrant for a traffic signal, and you want it studied sooner rather than later?
Yes.
The reason I ask is the most impactful this is going to be from a traffic standpoint, unless John wants to weigh in, otherwise, is when it's completed and operational, right? That's when you have the most vehicles leaving and coming and whatnot. So, I mean, is there any, is there any thought that you think you might get that warrant before?
No, we, we didn't think we would, so that's why we proposed it at six months ago.
Okay, the only caveat I have is that item that John brought up early in the presentation about the discrepancies between the numbers. You know, if that's, if that's the case, if, if the higher number, he seemed to think that he would need that warrant, right?
Yes, Mister Chairman, when they did the warrant, it was prior to the hundred and thirty trips coming out in and out of the driveway. So they did the warrant a year ago, and they never did it in the new FEIS, they never updated it.
I would just like to be able to review the traffic situation sometime within the next six months, as their schedule comes into finer focus as to how many trips, timing. Just waiting six years to me just, just doesn't seem, it seems too long.
So there's six hundred and forty-five residential units. You could say that after the issuance of a CO for a certain number of the residential units, they should relook at that if you think that a certain amount would. And John, I'm looking at you, if you think that a certain number may trigger the updated analysis?
I think that's a, a great suggestion, because it will provide an indication based on the actual boots on the ground as to how much traffic it will generate. And the, the applicant's traffic consultant has used their best judgment to determine how much traffic will come and go at this driveway as opposed to the other driveway from these units. But in reality, it's going to be something different, how much different, which way, we don't know. So if you were to go out there after, let's say, a quarter of the units were built, and see how many trips were coming in and out, and then multiply it by four, you'll have a much more accurate indication of the future condition.
What do we, what would we have to do to prove that during construction, we need a light at Eagle Valley Road and Sterlington Road?
The, the honest answer to that is the way the warrants work, it's based on volume. And the construction vol, it's, well, it's based on, there are nine warrants, four of them are based on volume, one of them is based on pedestrians, one of them is based on schoolchildren, one of them is based on train stations, and one of them is based on accidents. You're never going to meet, meet the volume warrants during construction. You need to have about a hundred vehicles an hour, or maybe it's eighty, but I doubt that you'll have it coming out of the driveway. The only way you would meet it is if you had five accidents in one year that were correctable by the installation of a traffic signal, and we don't want to go there.
So you're saying that's not, not possible, it's not feasible at this point?
Yeah, it's not feasible, you'd have to have, you'd have to allow construction, have five accidents and say, okay, we need a warrant, let's put a signal in. And we, we, we don't want to get to that point. I, I will, I, I will offer, the most important thing is that the sightlines, and Sean mentioned this, that the sightlines are adequate so that people coming down that hill can see somebody coming out of the driveway and decide, okay, I need to stop. And they can stop safely, not in panic mode. That's the most important thing. And then after that, the board has been considering restrictions that will reduce or limit the risk. There's no zero risk in any, any traffic issue. By limiting the hours to those less busy on the road, you're making it easier for the trucks during those hours to turn onto and off of the road, and not having them try to accept, accept unacceptable gaps in the really busy hours. And by limiting the turns, as, as I suggested, you're eliminating the movements that are most difficult to do while still allowing the applicant to access the site in a fairly reasonable manner. So I think the board has gone a long way on the construction issue to address the safety concerns. To Sean's point, we just, I, I think we still need to confirm that on the sightlines, but I believe that they, they should have that.
If we did a signal warrant study after a CO was issued for the one hundred and sixty-second unit, does that make sense?
Yeah.
I would suggest either a TCO or occupancy of, you know, because, wait, it's gonna be, I don't know, like the building inspector.
All right, so let's, let's say between nine and three, Monday through Friday only, five trucks an hour, max, to remove trees. And Michelle, I would ask the town board to petition Orange County to make some changes on Sterling Mine Road, the signage at the very least, going up the hill, going east or north. Going towards seventeen.
You say ten, ten to three?
Nine to, nine to three.
And still within, within that nine to three, five trucks each hour during that.
Right, for tractor-trailer, multi-axle trucks. And no restrictions for pickup trucks and cars.
Okay, did you have any other comments on the finding statement?
I don't think I do, no.
Would the board feel comfortable with, and I would pass the traffic changes by both John and Sean, approval of the finding statement subject to modification per the discussions this evening?
I'd be okay with that. Do we have to, we need a motion to vote on this?
Yes. So it would be a motion to approve the finding statement as amended this evening per this evening's discussion. I was just taking up a motion to.
Does anybody have anything else that we should put in there?
Are we putting in the no commercial left turn?
I don't think so.
Yeah, so all of that, all those conditions would be included as mitigation findings in the finding statement. But then when we get to the resolution that I'll talk about after the finding statement, I would include them in there as well. So that you're covered from both.
So there'll be a resolution after the finding statement?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I just want to make sure we, don't drop the finding statement, I think they, they really want that thing done.
Okay. Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the finding statement per Kelly's description. One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, if you want it, you could also approve an amended resolution of conditional site plan approval, which would amend your. of conditional site plan approval, which would amend your prior approval from, I don't know what date that was, for the realignment to include construction access. The potential conditions would be those new findings for the mitigation findings in the finding statement, compliance with Valerie's memo, Sean's memo, a determination from the building inspector regarding the road lighting, or is that more site plan?
Site plan.
I forgot that one. And then really separating out how they have to come back for full site plan approval. That was not a motion, that was just my descriptions of what you're doing. All right, the motion would be to, if you would like, to adopt a resolution of conditional approval for amended site plan regarding the construction access per tonight's discussion. In your intent, okay, thank you.
No, I, I would like that to be restricted, not to go out to the first quarter of twenty-four.
That's fine, the tree clearing, oh wait, no, this is for the construction access. So, the construction access road, when do you want that to be reevaluated? Because right now, they would still be restricted until, end of twenty-three, clearing would be completed, and then they're going to go through the end of April to take the.
We're just asking at this point for, to be allowed use of road for clearing, clearing-related activities.
What are the related activities?
Oh, whatever, control, removal of trees.
Sediment traps, just the work that's associated.
Give us a date.
Mr. Chairman, your, your approval right now would be restricted by just tree clearing, restricting the activities.
Let's not use clearing, let's use felling and removal.
Okay.
Because clearing.
What do you mean, felling, right?
So, what even after they fell the trees, they can use the access road to then remove the trees?
Right, right.
Well, but they're, they won't use access.
Can I ask a question of the applicant?
So, why don't we just say three?
Okay, so, they're. They're proposing that it be through April thirtieth, if they need to use it past then, they will have to return to.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I have a question for the applicant.
How many trees in the truck? About?
Probably varies on diameter of the trees.
What?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
It's a variable.
Even, even cutting it off in March, you know, that what we've given you is twenty-eight hundred truck trips already, and you aren't talking about five thousand semi-trees.
Eight thousand.
Well, some of the trees are involved in.
Even so, that's three trees in the truck.
Well, we've gotten April thirtieth, so that's.
We, we, we have the restriction in there, five per hour for six hours a day, five days a week, that's it.
I'm just saying that adds up.
If it's not enough, that's not our problem.
It's more than enough, that's my point.
You think it's, okay.
No, it is more than, unless there's only three trees in the truck.
But for part of that, understand that this is, they won't be able to use the other entrance until, you know, balanced. So, at the same time, they're likely going to try and bring in the other construction vehicles. They usually get parking stored on site so that they can start the preparation for that. So, but if you're using April thirtieth as a cutoff date to use that as a construction entrance, then that's the cutoff date, and if they need to go past that, then they have to come back.
It's funny, it's.
Right, that's, that's fine, I'm fine with that.
In April, it's two trees, two trucks.
Now, that'll be in the resolution, Kelly, not in the finding statement?
That would be in the resolution, not in the finding statement. But Sean, one of the other things that I wrote down that John had stated, and Sean just reminded me, and I have to scroll up for it, is that one of the other conditions would be the installation of a temporary video camera, where it would store it for a month so that they can make sure, if the building inspector gets any complaints, he can investigate that.
One thing on the dates, so April thirty, I understand the idea of April thirtieth, but if you look at it from the perspective of the planning board meetings, so if April thirtieth, that means they would have to come back to your planning board meeting in April, which is the beginning of April, but then they would have to apply or submit stuff in March. So, you're not looking at much turnaround for them to really have an idea of how much is coming down. So, you might want to consider May second.
May second.
May second is your next meeting, I think.
Let's say May fifteenth.
Okay.
Thank you, Valerie.
Yeah, no, good, good point.
You have to predict, you got three trees, finish it.
Now, when, when could, when does this allow them to start?
As soon as they complete any outstanding remaining conditions, which would generally just be compliance with any comments in Valerie or Sean's memos that relate specifically to using this as a construction entrance, so installation of the, I'm pointing at John, the camera, and any signage to restrict traffic movements, then they can start.
And they get their variance.
Yeah.
That's on there, that's on there, yeah, that's on there.
That's, it is, but.
So, hopefully, they said that they've got a plan to be starting on the twenty-third. Hopefully, that's all in place, and they're ready to go by then, but.
And I should be able to sign off on the resolution by then?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, that's.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, it'll be drafted by then, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I'll make a motion, and maybe you could.
I was just asking Kelly if she anticipates there to be an actual site plan for you to sign. The normal process is you sign the resolution, they complete the conditions, and then you sign the plan.
But nothing is really changing on the site plan, other than its usage.
No, I think that probably we would, we usually write sign-off letters to make sure that those conditions are done. I think that we would each have to submit something to Deborah, the building department, saying, yes, those conditions are done, yes, they can use this for construction access. And then there wouldn't be anything for you to sign, but then the applicant can, could go forward and apply for whatever they needed from the building department. But without those letters, they wouldn't be able to, just to make sure that those specific conditions that you've talked about this evening have been completed.
We, we would like some sort of final sign-off from the board, or a letter, or, or something.
Put it in writing, we can do.
Yeah, just, just in case.
I can draft a letter for your signature once those letters are.
Okay.
That would make the record cleaner, I agree.
Okay, so nine to three, Monday to Friday, five an hour.
Camera? No left turns, signage, I typed it all down.
No left turns out of Sterlington.
No, no left turns from the east.
No left, but you have.
No left turns from the west, from the west, from Jersey, western.
Yeah, but that would be a turn onto Eagle Valley Road.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
It prefers left turns out of the signage.
No left turns out going towards Jersey, no left turns in.
No right, no right turns in.
No right turns in.
Well, whatever, let's, I'm confused.
I wrote it down, I have John Canning's suggestion, so you can't make the right turn in, and you can't make the left turn out, so you always have to be coming.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, and that keeps it in Ramapo. Okay.
Ah ha, now I get it.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion to pass the resolution. Anything you want to add, Kelly?
Just for Deborah, a motion to approve a resolution of conditional approval for an amended site plan pursuant to the discussions held this evening.
And you've got the details?
I have the details.
Okay.
And I'll type them all up.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion. Second, on favor?
Aye.
No one opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for taking the time.
And I would, I would ask that you aggressively pursue the Ramapo entrance.
Thank you. And thank you all for taking the time for us tonight. You're a very reasonable and very, very agreeable body of people to work with. Thank you very much for your time. You need to work on accounting also, right? We'll try our best.
Can I just say, thank you for being such good neighbors? You really are, like up on Long Meadow, and I always know when I'm behind, because there will, nobody will ever go a mile above forty miles an hour on Stone My Road. Really good neighbors.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Thanks, John.
Does anybody need a break for thirty-four minutes? No, I'm fine. Okay, next is Tuxedo Farms. Oh, yeah, why don't we get that out? Yeah, no.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too, thank you.
Hi, Susan, welcome. I'm very glad to have another season here.
You.
Room two.
The road definitely named by the Nibelkans.
Oh, yes.
Okay, good meeting.
Very good.
Good meeting you. Thank you.
When they come down out of Jersey, so I didn't hear, you have no name, you have.
I know, I, I live over there, so I know what you're talking about. Okay, good meeting. Take care. Well, appreciate that. They have to do the minutes.
This is the longest meeting we've had.
Well, I just saw the agenda last night.
Unfortunately.
And today is my first day back at work, so I'm like, oh my gosh.
Maybe tomorrow you'll come around from.
I am working.
Guys, why don't we get, why don't we get started, please? Appreciate your patience, sitting through two hours of that. Maybe you learned something about how to deal with this. I'd like to further indulge you. We have a very quick issue number seven for Metro R Services. The only thing we have to do on that is schedule a public hearing. So if you could just quickly go over that project and we could...
Recap the project?
Not the whole thing, just an overview of you.
So we have Metro R subdivision here, Mr. Chair. Metro R subdivision, what we're looking for is to schedule a public hearing, to get a clearing, creating and filling permit. Basically, what we're looking to do is start clearing trees for the main access road and the bridge it needs to cross forward. Just over two acres of clearing, probably about two and a quarter, if we do what is just considered the first phase of the project. I know Sean hasn't seen the phasing plan yet. Project is proposed to be phased in two phases.
We have some new members of the board. Just say this is on Warwick Road, if you know where that is.
I believe everybody has been on. So plan, two phases. First phase is the construction of the actual road and preliminary grading of the stormwater management area. That'll be used as a sediment basin during construction. Right now, that's really what we're looking to get in front of the planning board and hear the public's comments, because we are not quite at final yet. We anticipate to be there within a couple of months. But as mentioned before, the tree clearing window that we're trying to beat so the project is not put back another year. That's the quick recap.
Okay. Anybody had any questions about this?
Pretty much no, this one.
Our prior action was site plan approval?
No, we haven't. We gave a...
Subdivision of...
Subdivision.
I think that's for ARB of each lot.
And site plan of each lot.
And site plan of each lot.
Correct. We still have to come back for additional site plan for each lot. We do have conditional final subdivision and site plan. And negative.
Schedule a public hearing.
So we would just have a resolution to schedule the, our motion to schedule a public hearing for February 8th. Right? That's the next, that's the first Tuesday.
February 7th.
Yeah, February 7th. I was looking at 20. Okay, so I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing on this. February 7th, second, on favor.
Thanks, folks.
Okay. Told you it'd be quick. One final thing. I never open the regular meeting, so I'll make a motion to do that.
Second.
Second, everybody approves that. Also, I all, also, we want to approve the minutes from our last meeting. Susan, since you weren't here, you can abstain, that's not a problem. Anybody have any questions on the minutes? Phil, any questions?
No.
Make a motion to approve the minutes? On favor? Okay.
Ron.
You're on, finally.
All right, thank you. And good evening, everybody. My name is Greg Gouche with the building companies. And Chairman, there's the planning board, thank you for having us tonight. We just completed an 18-month process so much with the town board, which is a very productive collaborative process. And we look forward to doing the same thing with you as we do our planning process. The our special permit was approved just before Thanksgiving this year. So now we're diving into this process. With me tonight, Little Norris from Related, Brad Schwartz from Zaren, Zaren's Net, our trustee, lead news council, and Ashley Li, who's playing doubleheader tonight with Akerah. And this, we are very brief agenda tonight. Little R is not here, and our civil engineer is not here, Langen. But this is really a TV for tonight. And we look, we have a very short presentation, I think a very limited agenda, which is still lucky, though. But then again, we're excited to start working with you and start building soon.
The key purpose for tonight is really just to give a high-level overview of kind of where we've been and where we want to go. We're not going to really dive into too much detail underneath the drawings. So this is more of a 30,000-foot overview tonight. We hope and expect to come back next month, where we'll roll across these a little bit more details. So that, Ashley.
So what we are, some of you may remember this project from going back into the 1990s, but we've had previous project approvals. This has been for the planning board in the past. And over the last 18 months, the town board has been reviewing an amended special permit, as well as a preliminary plan and the design standards. All of those were adopted in November 2022. And basically sets the basis for what? The planning board will be reviewing today.
I can just jump in, right? So the preliminary plan that the town board approved is sort of like a master plan, right, for the overall project. So think of like a two-step process, right? Town board approves this preliminary plan. It's a little bit of a misnomer, because it's really like a set of like 20 drawings. That includes what's called the regulating plan that we're going to show you soon, road plans, utility plans, surveys. There's a preliminary plan, the town board approved as the master plan for the project. That's what the town board approves. Now we're here for your board for step two, the individual site plans that implement that master plan.
But you don't have a site plan for tonight yet.
Correct. But that's the process that we're embarking on for anymore.
Those will be coming.
Those will be coming. And it'll be coming, as we'll get into shortly, in neighborhoods. It'll be broken up into different neighborhoods. So one of the things that was eliminated from the special permit, which was a previous requirement, was that there was strict phasing as part of the project. In order to be able to meet the market and advance certain phases in front of, there's certain neighborhoods in front of others that they're, they're selling better. The strict phasing requirement was removed. But obviously, as the neighborhoods move forward, they need to make engineering sense, so they will be packaged in a way that makes sense for water and sewer and other connections and breathing. So the concept plan that was approved by the town board is up on the screen right now. It includes 1,609 units total. That would be 1,321 non-restricted units, so those are open to people of any age. 288 age-restricted units. There would be a maximum of 500 multifamily units. That's based on the PID law, the amended PID law that was adopted. A minimum of 269 single-family detached units. And a maximum of 3,070 non-age-restricted bedrooms. As part of the planning board's scope of review, you will be making sure that these individual site plans are in conformance with the regulating plan. The regulating plan is basically the zoning map for this project. This is a high-level overview of the neighborhoods that are part of the project. The Phase 1, which we're anticipating to submit at the end of January for the February meeting, would include the Commons area and West Terrace. That would be followed by, also as part of Phase 1, but it would follow a few months later, would be the Upland Park neighborhood and East Terrace neighborhoods.
So ultimately, as part of this process, right, that these last two neighborhoods that Ashley mentioned would catch up to the first two, we would be looking for site plan approval for these four neighborhoods at the end of this initial site plan review process by your board.
One of the other areas that the planning board will be reviewing is conformance with the SMART code. That's the code, it's basically a special zoning code for this project. It says what land uses are allowed. It establishes your minimum lot sizes and your lot types. And it also has your bulk regulations. So you'd be making sure that the individual site plans conform to the updated SMART code. You'd also be reviewing it against the architectural and landscape guidelines. That has your materials and colors, your building and massing, and look-alike standards, meaning that you can't have two houses next to each other that look too similar. Also would be reviewed, reviewing the performance standards. These are really the engineering standards that would be reviewed by your town engineer. And these are the technical engineering requirements, requirements for your streets, your stormwater, and your sewer and water.
So Ashley's been talking about, like, what is the scope of the planning board's review, right? And it is, I think, quite focused on making sure that we're, again, implementing the special permit, on complying with the plan and those three documents that Ashley just mentioned. So it's really our job to come to the board, right, for site plans that conform with all the requirements that the town board adopted. The special permit has a couple of articles that I think are relevant for the planning board. The first is Article 8. That lays out the obvious, right? The site plans are going to be processed by your board. It also mentions the ARB review, which is to make sure that the exterior abilities against the performance of the architectural guidelines. So the special permit lays out a process, the ARB to review the exterior prior to final site plan approval. Then there's other two articles, Article 4 and Article 5, that authorize your board to grant certain waivers to the design standards, right, in the SMART code that we talked about, as well as modifications to the preliminary plan. We will identify for you if we are asking the board to approve that authority. But it's in the special permit just to provide some flexibility. We will identify for you any waivers that we're receiving. And it's our job to come to you and plan, I think, it's consistent with all the requirements that the town board adopted.
We have accessed all these documents.
You have accessed that, everybody?
Smart code.
Just as an example, right?
Smart code.
Yes.
So, yeah, it's all online, it's on the town website. Staff has it.
This, this is all online?
Yes.
And just as an example, right, just listen to the last meeting. Right, just take traffic, for example, right? When the town board adopted a special permit, it completed secret, adopted amended findings. So all the environmental impacts have already been exhaustively studied and vetted by both the applicant as well as the towns consultant. So traffic, for example, we provided a updated traffic report. The towns consultant reviewed, DOT has reviewed. We had calls during the special permit process with DOT to get the APD to sign off on the mitigation. That was ultimately approved. So many of the environmental impacts under secret, again, have been fully studied, vetted already. Mitigations have been identified. And as part of our submission later this month of February, we'll be providing the board a sort of a chart showing all the different mitigation measures that have already been approved and are incorporated into your board's secret findings, which we're asking to approve tonight as well. A lot of that heavy lifting has been done. This is really mostly implemented in these.
Is that slide deck on the town website?
The one for tonight?
Yes, this one.
We, not yet, but we could...
If you could send that to Deborah, okay? Because it's a good reminder for the next time, because we won't be doing any of that tonight.
Correct.
The site plan stuff.
Correct. So again, this is just a roadmap for the next...
Understood.
Few months.
Tonight's a really limited focus by the board, so we don't want to get into too many of the strenuous details, really because you don't have the application documents that you're finding.
Anything else? Are you...
I think we have. So, so this is the site plan, right? Your board has subdivision jurisdiction, as you know. One of the requests tonight is to extend the preliminary subdivision that was previously approved for what was called Phase 1. But there's going to be a separate subdivision application that we're going to submit to your board. And that's to carve out the school lot as its own standalone lot. Under the special permit, related is to donate approximately 40 acres to the school. So in order to consummate that transaction, we want to create that parcel as its own standalone lot. So we haven't submitted it yet, but we will be submitting a subdivision application just for the school lot. And on the screen, that's pretty self-styled, right? The current tax lot is in the dash lines. That's what's currently filed on the county. And the green is what is supposed to be the new subdivided lot. It's the same exact dimensions that the town board approved in 2015. It's carried through all this time, but it was never, again, submitted to a subdivision and filed in the county. So we need to create that green parcel as its own standalone lot. And we expect to submit that to you, again, as part of our January submission.
Not to get into the details on that, but will we need any input from the school district on that?
No. In terms of a schedule, again, very, I use the word opposing conceptual, right? We understand nothing is set in stone. This is very, again, high level, but it's what we would like to achieve these next six months. Be here tonight for this initial conversation. We do understand that your board has a draft findings before you, that we would ask you to adopt tonight to complete the secret process by the planning board, as well as to grant the subdivision extension. We'll submit more detailed site plans into this month in advance of the February meeting. Ashley mentioned the neighborhoods that we expect to apply to our January submission. Then again, East Terrace and Upland will be followed probably in March. Between February and April, we're thinking the real site plan review. And then we'll be submitting later in the spring the architectural plans and rendering with the sort of the ARB process, I think, that's going to take over, you know, in the spring. And we're hoping to begin construction sometime this summer.
How many site plans do you envision, total?
So...
Not going to hold you to that.
It's a, it's a, like, how many drawings in this set?
No, no, no. How many individual site plans? I mean, how many neighborhoods, maybe, is a better way?
So for the first site plan approval, right, whenever that occurs, four neighborhoods. So it's one site plan, right? That's a set of drawings, as you know, that would cover four neighborhoods. Maybe four, three or four, maybe?
What's the total neighborhood? What's the total? On the project, how many neighborhoods?
You're like mixed users.
It's all through different levels. So like, who's the active battle, for example? That's not going to be part of this first phase.
Well, the first phase is four.
Is four. Three, I think, or maybe three.
No, saying in general.
Three or four, yeah.
Three or four submittals.
Yeah, exactly right.
Which would be multiple neighborhoods each submittal.
Right, first, right, the first one, we're not there. Would love to take you up there by the way, sometime to show you. The first neighborhood is already cleared. They're leveled, they're almost construction-ready, Commons and West Terrace. And then, so we're doing those for sure. And then two adjacent neighborhoods, Upland Park and East Terrace, or at least parts of those, will be part of the same site plan submission, the first one. It'll pick up, then as we pick it more, we'll go out, probably be three? Total?
So anybody have any questions on what was presented?
So on schedule, so we can expect the first submission, the 24th. Our next meeting is the 7th. So that's about two weeks that we can review it. And are you going to be asking for approval at that first meeting? Or we'll just have a conversation about it at that point?
There'll be an introduction of the site plan.
This still requires public hearing as well, right?
Site plans are discretionary. I'm sorry, public hearings for a site plan are discretionary. Site plan itself is not discretionary.
And my, my feeling on that would be, the town board had two public hearings already. I would not be in favor. I don't feel the need for another one.
I agree.
How many properties are in a neighborhood?
It varies, varies. Neighborhoods are very diverse in their product types, and so it's...
So how about the first one, for instance?
Tuxedo Motors.
So the first one, Commons has 336.
Like, three to six.
It's mostly retail, it's like town center, if you will. There's retail, first floor. And then multifamily of 336 units, multifamily. And then West Terrace, which is the one fully graded. That is 31, 206 townhomes. And then, those ones that are the first, you know.
Another site plan include, basically subdividing into specific properties? Like, are these going to be independently owned, or...
The rule is, it's both, some are multifamily, no.
Yeah.
And ticket family, yes. And in townhomes, for the most part, yes. It's actually getting covered at this point, too. Yeah, so we're going to take a close look at that, right? So whatever further subdivision is required, we're going to have to submit that to your board as part of this process. We have some, we have some homework to do in terms of developing site plans, as well as the subdivisions that marry up with the site plans, as necessary, right?
The subdivisions require public hearings. That's why I said just site plans, discretionary.
Does each neighborhood require a public hearing?
No, it depends on what's occurring within that neighborhood and what approval is being sought from this board.
You mean, the building types will govern that, or...
No, if it's, the only time the public hearing would be required is if there's subdivisions involved. If it's just, you know, all going to be owned by one landlord and it's all apartments and there's no subdivision, then there's, and it's just a site plan, then a public hearing is discretionary.
I don't think that condition will occur, right? Because you have a mix in all these neighborhoods.
Right, we will have subdivisions. Okay.
They'll, they'll have, they'll have a number of them. I'm just not sure which neighborhoods that lots there are yet, because we haven't seen them.
So there may be multiple public hearings.
Depending on what comes in, yes. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, can I just bring up one thing for your board to consider?
Sir?
Could you go back to the schedule, please?
Sure.
The, the dates, I understand this is very high-level schedule or timeframe review. Discussing a January 24th submission, due on the end of February meeting, that's two weeks. I don't, you know, this is four neighborhoods. I've worked on previous review. Each neighborhood was like 50 to 60 sheets, you know. So you're going to be getting a large submission to go over, at least initially, within two weeks. So I just want the board to start thinking about whether that's adequate time, whether you need a submission beforehand, whether you want to get all four at one time.
So we intend to do it the first time. Right, we start with Commons and West Terrace, and then East Terrace and Upland Park to follow sometime in March, most likely.
Okay, that's not what that says. The previous slide did say that, but that says January 24th and has been...
Right, the sub will just follow, but, yes, that's definitely...
Is it enough time for you and Valerie?
Right, I think, well, if we even individually do two with like a number, and it's dependent on the subdivisions and stuff like that, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be tough.
So we're going to be reviewing a lot of engineering drawings, pretty much.
Yes.
Are copies of those going to be here? Because I don't like, like, looking at large engineering drawings on a little screen.
We'll submit whatever you like. How many hard copies?
I like to have hard copies here, so I can come in and, and review them.
I think that's the important thing to discuss this, this evening, whether...
I can't do a review.
Each board member can let Deborah know if they want a hard copy or not. And then the applicant can contact Deborah and say, how many hard copies?
Or there's just a set here, we can come down here and review it.
A master copy here would be fine. And I could come in...
I, I think, I think one, I think one copy here, hard copy, will be sufficient. And I'm sure you can accommodate.
I mean, one option is that they could submit for the first two neighborhoods, give a presentation of the first two neighborhoods, and then we can get, like, all substantive comments back for the following meeting for March.
Look, we include on the schedule the bottom, like, ongoing consultant review and coordination. So I think that dialogue that we could have, see what we submit, and if that's, if that's valid, then that's, that's fine, right? So see, let's see what we submit, and we'll figure out exactly what we want.
We're not approving anything. We're not approving anything, so...
No.
We're just reviewing and asking questions and can follow up at the next meeting for further questions.
Absolutely.
Do you guys need hard copies?
Yes, I already spoke with the applicant, yeah.
Okay, so you do. And any other questions, Phil, Chris?
You said that all this is on the website, right?
It will be.
This presentation will be tomorrow, but...
This is on the website now.
Special permit and all the appendices, as well as the secret findings, the tech memo, the traffic study, that's all on town board's side.
Okay, so the first thing is the approval, the extension of the preliminary site plan, or preliminary subdivision approval. We've already extended this, I believe, 10 times for six months.
It brings it to your July 4th meeting, which likely would be rescheduled, but that's what we've got right now, so...
Well, this one ran out in December, so...
Oh, even better, then that brings it to your June...
At least by my calculations.
June 6th meeting.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to extend that approval. Approve.
Aye.
Everybody? Okay. The next thing, final thing for tuxedo forms for tonight, is the findings statement. This is the secret process, this is the environmental review. It was exhaustively done by the town board. Hundreds, if not thousands, of hours worth of work. This process does not require us or the town board to issue a negative declaration as we normally do for secret. This is a little atypical process, okay? When we approve the findings statement, our version of the findings statement that Kelly has prepared, that completes the secret process for the planning board. And it completes it for the project, period. Correct?
Yes.
So with that, does anybody have any questions, comments on the findings statement? Start with you, Susan.
I do, I do have a question, and forgive me if this is something that is known. So in the hazardous materials section, it talks about the Western Historic Fill area. And it says intend to remediate or intend to mitigate as, as needed. So how does that get accounted for? Like, how, who, who gets reported? Or how do we know what gets done and when that gets done? And, and does anybody else say, yes, this was done accurately?
Again, it's sort of a, it sounds like a horrible dynamic environmental disaster, but it's really a small old dynamic refrigerator or something. I haven't seen it, but that's what I was told. And there was a, one that's already closed at Eastside.
Right.
And this is actually up in the area, which is nowhere near where we're developing it, because we actually moved the developments, so it's like that area. So there's no requirement actually ever touching, right? And so I think it's probably due to housekeeping in some way to get it cleaned up. That's why, that's always it. It tends to, there's your requirement, either you have this requirement, of course, we would have to do it immediately, there is no requirement to do so.
Okay. So it's not impacting the water or anything?
What's that?
Not impacting the water?
No, absolutely not. So...
And there is, there are other agencies that review it. And like, I think the way I typically pose this is the cost of filing with those agencies is more expensive than the work to actually close it. So it's like, it's just payable, and moving a few...
So it's, I, it's another word to, it's a tendency, yeah, at some point, you fight it out, right? So, there's no, you're seeing, just, you know.
Okay.
We want to save money for the building and stuff.
Hey, thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
That's just comments.
Justin, questions?
So, in the traffic portion, there were some measures to mitigate traffic, like providing chimney services to the train stations, for instance. So how, how do we ensure that that's maintained further down the road? If the property's sold or there's other management?
Well, it's your requirement of the special permit, so it's part of the law. Who owns the property?
So whoever owns the property after you guys... So, whoever owns the property after you guys has to comply with that.
Special permit says, wherever it's actually the transfer of land, whoever do report that, they have to take a responsibility to all things in the special permit.
It would be up to the building inspector to enforce that if somebody were complaining and that wasn't being done.
It goes with whoever owns the property.
Exactly, yes. And then new order, actually, has to permanently submit a document to the town saying, "I received the special permit, and I know I need to comply with all this."
That's, that's my comment.
Okay, thanks. Phil? You're okay?
Yeah.
Ned?
I have no comment.
You have no comment?
I don't have anything.
Nothing for me?
No.
Okay.
So, I had one change. The name of the company changed. So, on page three, that first sentence would say LR Tuxedo Development Group LLC, as successor to Tuxedo Reserve. But that was the only change that I had.
I just figured a sentence fully related, just separate it for setting up your file.
So, I can make a motion to accept or approve the finding statements, right?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, Greg. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Sorry I had to wait so long.
Don't worry about it, it's very...
It was worth the wait, though, I guess.
It was worth the wait, it was pretty cheap.
I'm not sure I have that.
Okay, take care, guys. As Greg said, I'd encourage all of you to set up with the building inspector through Deborah to take a tour of the site. It's pretty rugged, but Dave, the building inspector, has an SUV, he can take you up there, he's taken me up there. So, you know, try to, try to work that out sometime.
You got a tomato.
Yeah, very nice views. Our final, final item for tonight, then, is Jason Bramlett, 922 Route 17, which is also known as the Tuxedo Autobody. And it's going to be changed, and you could, if you could sign in, we're not familiar with you guys as much.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So, what we're just presenting is a change of use concerning the Autobody, which is going to be changed to business and professional offices. There's not too many major improvements that are going to happen to the site. We are getting rid of some of the impervious cover, the asphalt and concrete, just to meet the developmental coverage requirement for the impervious. And there's going to be some additional trees and bushes to the site. The site is not currently striped, so we will add stripe for parking. I know we didn't show it on this submission, we just showed the 188 spot to meet the ADA requirement. But we will be showing the 12 parking spaces that were proposed with the previous submission for the Autobody. And we're also, the one other major thing that's happening is, there's currently two openings to access the site, and we're going to close the southernmost entrance and just keep the northern one.
And this is going to be an office building?
Yes.
No storage of equipment or equipment inside of it, or? I believe you have a water treatment business, as I understand.
Yes, sir. Do you have a little to make sense of the point of that?
Yeah, we will be storing a little bit of cool in the shop.
So, what is a little bit of equipment?
It's called plate packs, so we have, it's about a three or four by four feet box, so we'll have two of those in there, and then the rest will be for office space.
And what about service vehicles for your customers? Do you have those parked around, or?
We're an engineering firm. We don't do...
You don't?
Production.
You don't do the installations?
No, no installations here, we're service.
Okay, all right. Okay. So, you gentlemen are the owners, or your...
My father is.
Your father is the owner, okay. Okay. So, let's get our consultants' reports.
So, I think the applicant needs to revise their site plan and submit a site plan in accordance with what's required in the four site plan submissions. The site plan itself, and I'm sure, you know, I'll turn the engineering components over to Sean, but just in terms of zoning, like, the zoning table needs to be better defined as to what you have existing and what you're proposing. Right now, you have existing and required, but you're not really showing what is proposing. There needs to be more information in terms of what it is exactly you're doing, what it is you're changing on the site, your parking. You know, we do like to require natural features to be identified, if there's any floodplains, or, and we also look for topography, you know, utilities. So, there's, we provided in our memo exactly the site plan elements that are required as per the zoning code, so it would just be probably good to go through and see if your site plan has these elements, and if they're applicable to your, your actual project, then you should include those into the next submission. And then we'll be able to provide a more detailed review of your application.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know if the board had any questions on that. So, very similarly, there are a lot of components required for the site plan review. It's change of use, it's professional office. I had the same question as to what that entails under the use. So, I think you need to provide a project narrative that kind of defines what, what's going to occur at the site. There are a number of existing non-conforming conditions. I think you should submit a letter to the building inspector, that's under his jurisdiction, whether that meets the requirement. Development coverage, the entire site is paved, like, edge to edge. I know you're removing some asphalt. Your calculation, or not calculations, but the table, the bulk table indicated that you're going, the maximum amount of development coverage is 60%?
Yes.
And you're going to have 60%? I'm going to need to see a calculation for that, because it's actually based off a net lot area. And, you know, if you're 61%, you may need a variance or another determination of existing non-conforming use, so that needs to be fleshed out a little bit. In terms of traffic, the work and access, the work that they're doing to close up one of those entrance ways is going to go to the DOT, that's within their right of way. They, northerly access, actually, they obtain it through easement, correct? So, we had asked for a copy of that easement. I'd hate to see them close one driveway entrance and then find out perhaps that they don't actually have the access they think they have, and now they have no access, it's a landlot parcel, and I got to go back to the DOT. Water, sewer, it's an existing site, they actually have seepage pits on the site, kind of unusual, don't really see that that often. I spoke to Mike Sandor today, and he said he's understanding it works fine. In situations like that, it wouldn't necessarily require the applicant to replace it, just because it's outdated. But I would suggest that you have a requirement that they actually provide an engineering report, that the engineer looked at it, did some testing, did some inspection, and that it meets the current requirements. If it doesn't meet their current requirements, then we have to go back and look at it. Same thing with the well, there's different separation requirements to preserve water quality, to make sure that they actually meet that. The well is shown in a general location. I don't know if it actually can meet those requirements, so the applicant would have to finalize where that well is located and demonstrate that they meet the health department requirements. And the other thing you may want to consider is this further gets along in your review is landscaping and screening. You know, it's a, it's a large paved area, we recommend that they consider removing some additional pavement. Even if they remove the pavement that they're proposing remove, there's still a large paved area for an office that only needs 10 parking stalls. And it has, it obviously has visual impacts. Last thing I have is just ARB. This board, ARB approvals required, but the, from what's submitted, the board can't take any ARB actions, so we're going to need something to address ARB.
One other thing just to add, your short EAF that you submitted was dated July 1st, 2021, that needs to be updated and submitted.
Have you received the reports from Valerie and Sean?
I did, just received them today, and I'll leave it to review. I can comment on a few things, if you wanted me to.
Sure, well, it's up to the chairman, but I'm not...
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I did pull from the Orange County records today, the DDA easement to allow access to the site of that northerly entrance. So, that's just some less thing to worry about. I do know we...
We would need documentation for that.
Yeah, I'll submit that DDA easement to the board to review. And then, just for the setback for the, these two seepage pits, I know from the conversation I had with Michael Sandor, these are just 15 years old. We can show that they meet the setback requirement on July 1st for Orange County, we can include that in our next mission. Yeah, we can definitely do that. Right, sure, yeah, yeah. We will be able to provide what the board is looking for.
One, one item, I just want to make sure that you're clear. So, Orange County regulates residential sewage disposal systems, this would be under the DEC, under the intermittent wastewater standards.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Phil, any questions or comments?
Yeah, what was the previous use of this property?
It's an Autobody shop.
Was there any environmental issues associated with that?
I mean, there's president...
Has any of the soil around or the ground been analyzed? As an example, you know, Autobody shops could be using who knows what, chemicals. So, has that been looked at?
I can review what our client sees if they have something, like a phase one evaluation of the site.
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing whatever, whatever may be available in terms of determining what may be in the ground at that location. You have a well there, correct?
Yes.
You know the depths of the well, and the location apparently is somewhat arbitrary, isn't it?
They know the general vicinity in terms of the well, when, if the well was installed 15 years ago, it would have been under the current requirements, and the well driller has to file with the DEC a well completion report. So, we've asked them to submit that information. That will give you the depth, the different geology, and how much water the well is...
What about wastewater and sewage? How has that been handled in the previous use?
The septic, I'm sorry, not the septic, but the seepage pitch that we discussed?
Yeah.
They said they were installed 15 years ago, but I'm going to ask them to inspect them and make sure that they've been maintained and are properly operating.
And it has to be located in particular, a certain distance in the well location, I guess?
Yes.
Okay, and it meets that? Well, we don't know.
I don't know, because I don't know where the well is.
Until the well has been there.
Yeah, we'll get the info.
I have no other questions at this time.
I don't have any questions.
I have a couple things. The previous site plan, going back, what, year and a half, was never approved because we wanted all the vehicles taken away. All the vehicles are gone, I don't know if that trailer is still there, I haven't ridden past there.
There is a construction trailer.
No, it's like, I think it's a boat trailer.
Oh, I did not see a boat, I just was there today, I didn't see a boat trailer.
All right, but there is still something.
Just a very small truck.
I don't know, that shows the whole thing, but...
That's, that's prior when all the old cars were still there. None of those. So, Kelly, does that old site plan have to be closed out somehow, or?
It's already expired, it never got finalized, the conditions weren't completed, and it wasn't signed. But if there are still strenuous vehicles, I'll say, on site, you can certainly require them to be removed as far as...
Right, ultimately, we would, we would want that. You know, no, no old vehicles, engines, there was all kinds, I don't know if you remember, going back a year, there was all kinds, it was like a junkyard there.
Yeah, it's, it's scary.
I know most of it was gone, I thought the boat trailer was still there, I should have ridden by, but I didn't.
Yeah, no.
Will, will this need a public hearing at some point?
It is a site plan, so under your code is in your discretion.
Did you want to say something?
There you go.
Yeah, I thought, I saw your age right here. All right, I'm not sure it needs a public hearing. Well, we won't schedule one now, we'll have, you have a lot of things to clean up on the site plan and to answer the, to answer the consultant's questions, so we won't, we won't schedule that tonight. You know, you'll need a demo permit to kind of, I think you're going to strip off siding or some of the stucco, right? But before you do that, you're going to have to do an asbestos survey, is asbestos in anything? You're going to have to do a lead paint survey. This is an old building and very likely could have lead paint somewhere. So, you'll need that, or the building inspector will not issue a demo permit. And we need a demo permit even if, like, they're stripping some stucco or something like that. I mean, they're not knocking down the whole building, but...
I would defer to Deborah, I don't think they would require a demo permit, it might be a building permit for certain actions, but usually if you're just painting...
Well, we'll check with, check with Dave on that, that's, that's more in his...
I don't think it's, I don't think it's a building permit.
Okay, a demo permit.
Demo or, unless they're making structural changes.
Okay. Okay. All right, that's all I have, yeah.
This doesn't need a phase one environmental, does it?
In terms of secret, this is actually a type two action, so that's an automatic finding that there's no significant adverse environmental impacts. Bill requested it just to see if they could look, see if they've run any spills, because it was previously used as an Autobody.
I'm thinking of, what's in the ground?
Yeah, so we...
Oh, I was going to ask this, do they have to do drilling for soil sampling?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
It's just a piece of the building.
The reason I want to say that is if there's an oil leak, they could...
If there were engines there.
They could, there were tankers underneath there.
They could be oil, gas, and...
That's why if there was a spill and it was reported to the DEC, they're going to look for that, but other than that, there's no requirement that they do that unless there's something per septic and well.
At this time, they're saying that they are making any improvements to it, so we wouldn't require anything.
But we're going to get documentation that the pits are okay.
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
And if they're not...
Doing some additional drilling or anything like that.
That could trigger, that could trigger a dissonance. That's all I have.
Justin?
I'm good. I'm sorry.
So, can you describe the work that goes on? It's, it's an office building, and you do engineering?
So, we manufacture oil-water separated for offshore rigs. Over there will mainly be documentation, drafting, and correspondence.
And how many people work in there?
Three, currently three.
Okay. And then, is there any signage, like, is there going to be a big sign up front, or?
I believe there's a plan to be assigned up front, but...
We would review that as part of the ARB...
Yeah, that's something that we need to see, so...
You said you did, you do these for oil rigs?
Yes, sir.
And you're in New York, you know, right?
My family, I've lived in Orange County for five, almost five years now, my family just moved up in 2021.
Do you have an operation somewhere else?
We have an, yeah, we have an office in Houston.
Okay, that makes a little more sense to me.
Yeah, this is a remote location, yeah.
So, you do the design work here, production down in Houston?
Yes, Houston's headquarters.
What's the name of the company?
It's Energy Specialties International will be the official business. I think the property might be owned by Global Waste Water Management.
What do you engineer?
Oil-water separated for offshore rigs.
For what, I'm sorry?
Offshore oil drilling rigs.
Oh, okay.
We help meet them, we help them to meet environmental requirements, so keep that in mind.
Very well.
And then, so, the site's completely paved now, which proposing, basically removing minimum amount of paving?
Currently.
It would be nice to, you know, do a little bit more and make it a little bit nicer, it's kind of a big barren site, it's kind of ugly, so, you know what, my preference would be to see the site treated a little bit more nicely, get some planting and stuff. You know, if it's going to be an office, you can make it a little bit nicer, I think.
Sure. So, if you can get this information together and revise your plan and submit it by, do you have the date of the...
January twenty-fourth, I believe, it's.
By January twenty-fourth, so everybody has a chance to look at it, then we can put you on the February agenda. If you don't get it to us in time, it'll spill over too much. So you've got the ball.
And do, do we have a, a ARB submission checklist, like with the, um, the site plan checklist?
There is not an ARB checklist as far as underwear.
Right.
We just need to see more drawings of the building and understand.
You know, rendering similar to what you already submitted, but with a little bit of landscaping added, we'll, we'll need.
Tell me some landscaping and parking and stuff. If you, just take a look at what, what Steve's Pizza did.
Okay.
That came out very nice.
Are you anticipating the garage doors still being operable?
Currently, yes.
Or you're just, it's a great opportunity for big, nice big windows for people working inside.
They might be spucked out for more modern cars.
So that's something you'll want to note for the ARB application. So basically, you're gonna want to note what materials, what you're changing in the exterior of the building.
Okay, so hope, uh, hopefully we'll see you in February.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for your patience of hanging around, please.
Thank you all for your time.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Nobody else is ready? Anybody is against that?
Moving from Texas to New York?